What about Attorney Monahan?
Patrick Monahan is here.
Okay, I can hear you perfectly. Okay.
Attorney Mitchell, this is the Greenwich Hospital Yale New Haven team.
Perfect. Okay, I just want to make sure I can hear you. I can hear you good. Thank you.
And all of our witnesses are present.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll get started in about two minutes.
So for the purpose of clarity, are we going to acknowledge that only the speaker will not have?
I'm gonna go through the hearing instructions in just a moment. I'm gonna ask everyone to mute their devices because we're recording at this precise moment. So to everybody, just mute your devices if you don't want your conversation to be recorded. Okay, I just want to make sure everyone can hear me. So everybody can hear me. Just kind of nod your head a little bit.
Loud and clear.
Seeing heads nodding. Perfect. Okay. Good morning, everyone. We are on the record today with the hearing before the Health Systems Planning Unit, which is HSP, identified by docket number 20.
Can I, I'm the court reporter. Are we starting on the record now with me?
We are starting.
Oh, okay. Hasn't nobody addressed me yet, so I didn't know.
Oh, no worries. So during the hearing instructions we do, we just indicate that you'll be recording, but yes, you can go ahead now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
I'll start over. So good morning, everyone. This public hearing before the Health Systems Planning Unit, HSP, identified by docket number 2032342 CON, is being held on September 30th of 2020 to establish elective percutaneous coronary intervention or elective PCI at Greenwich Hospital. On March 14th of 2020, Governor Ned Lamont issued Executive Order 7B, which in relevant part suspended in-person open meeting requirements. That executive order was extended on September 8th of 2020 via Executive Order 9A to November 9th of 2020 to ensure the continuity of operations while maintaining the necessary social distance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. The Office of Health Strategy, or OHS, is holding this hearing remotely. We ask that all members of the public mute the device that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is being held pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 19A 639A, and will be conducted as a contested case in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 54 of the Connecticut General Statutes. My name is Michaela Mitchell. Victoria Veltrey, who is the Executive Director of the Office of Health Strategy, has designated me to serve as the hearing officer for this matter. My colleagues, Brian Carney and Hannah Nagy, are also here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application. The Certificate of Need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the parties, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, we ask that you maintain decorum throughout the proceedings. The hearing is being recorded and will be transcribed by BCT Reporting LLC. The documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to the Office of Health Strategy are available for review through our CON portal, which is accessible on the Office of Health Strategy's CON webpage. In making its decision, HSP will consider and make written findings concerning the principles and guidelines set forth in Section 19A-639 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Yale New Haven Health Services Corporation and Greenwich Hospital are the parties in this proceeding, and Stanford Health Incorporated has been designated as an intervenor with full rights in this matter. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Carney if he wouldn't mind reading into the record those documents already appearing on our table of record in this case. And before you do that, Brian, I know that what we have uploaded to the portal may be slightly different than what you actually received in your email. So, you know, we will make sure that we go through everything that we have received thus far, and everything will be corrected in the final table of record, but I'll turn it over to you, Brian, for what you do have.
Good morning. My name is Brian Carney of the Office of Health Strategy. At this time, I would like to add to the table of record Exhibits A through V.
All right. Are there any objections to the inclusion of these documents into the record? I'm gonna go with the attorney or counsel for Yale first.
Attorney Mitchell, no objections from Yale.
Okay, and then also counsel for the intervenor?
There are no objections to the exhibits listed A through B. I do have a procedural question about a potential addition to the exhibits in the table of record.
Okay.
First, and I'm hearing a little echo, I'm hoping you can hear me okay.
I can. I'm wondering if maybe someone else who's in with you might be connected to the hearing and also have their and also have their microphone turned on. Sometimes that will get rid of the echo.
In addition to one or two supportive letters, there was an additional supportive letter that may not have made it in by 4:30 yesterday, but I have here, it is from Representative Patricia Miller, and she wrote a letter of support dated September 27th. Submitted it yesterday, but it, for whatever reason, has not made it to the record. I have it here. It certainly submitted later in the day. And I don't know if it made its way after the 4:30 or 5 o'clock time period. That would be one thing I would ask that be submitted to the record.
Right, so we are gonna leave the record open for a week, as we customarily do, to allow for additional public comment if anyone wants to submit that in writing. So even if we have not seen it yet or looked at it yet, I would definitely advise you to take a look at the docket, make sure that it's there. We would usually put those in the public comment folder inside the docket, but if it's not there, you still have the opportunities to submit it at a later time. I also want to note that with the applicant, I believe it's their prefiled testimony, there were comments that were included from, I believe it's Neil Daley and want to say it's Charles, I don't know if it's Hugh, Hugh, but I did note that those were attached to the testimony, and I want to make clear on the record that those are public comments and going to be given the appropriate weight as they are not going to be given under oath. So we do note that those public comments were included with the prefiled testimony. Anything else additional? Attorney Monahan?
The only other administrative question I will raise is in our request for, or in our submission of prefiled testimony, I did reference several docket numbers as seeking, including the state plan, as well as seeking administrative notice. If they are referenced throughout, through the hearing as opposed to submitting the entire statewide health plan or an entire docket number, of course, several of them have already been referenced in many of the testimonies. And I was just wondering if, for the formality of the record, if administrative notice could be taken of CON docket numbers that are referenced in testimony or throughout the course of the hearing. As opposed to submitting the?
The actual documents. So I will say that if they're mentioned in the prefiled testimony, if they're included in the record, you know, they would be something that we could look at in making our decision. So yes, there would be notice taken of that. But then in addition to the, to the plan, the plan is, as you know, I'm sure you know, Attorney Monahan, it's one of the criteria that we look at. So by reference, you know, that is also included.
I'm frozen on my end.
I'm frozen?
Yeah, once in a while it's freezing on me. I don't know if it's on my end or what's going on, but.
Okay, can you still hear me well? Okay, all right, just as long as you can hear me well, that's perfect. But let me know if you cannot hear me. But the point that I was trying to make is that anything that is included in the record, whether it be a decision was noted in the prefiled testimony or, you know, discussed during the hearing, I'm going to take official notice of those. You know, in terms of actually having a list of them, I don't. But once we start discussing those decisions and they're referenced and they're part of the record, then we can go back and take a look at them. And then also with the statewide, the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan, it's one of our criteria that we look at. So you don't have to technically include the plan in there, but, you know, I do understand why you're making this, making this statement. So you're covered.
Attorney Mitchell, I have a point of clarification. This is Matt McKinnon, attorney for the applicants. It was my understanding that the administrative notice that the intervenor sought was to particular decisions and not the entirety of the docket, but the particular, but the decisions themselves.
Right.
So I wanted to make sure that was clear for the record.
Attorney Monahan, you just mean the decisions that are referenced in those docket numbers, correct?
Yes, I have no intention of rehashing the testing cases. It's the decisions that were made in those docket numbers.
Yeah, and I do apologize if I mischaracterized your request.
Okay, so just to be clear, the decisions would be entered into the record, but not the entirety of the docket that pertains to those decisions?
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anymore that you wanted to mention, Attorney Monahan?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and then anything else from applicant's counsel, whether that be Attorney McKinnon or Attorney Ashneed?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. All right, so here's how we're going to proceed. The applicants are going to present their direct testimony. Then the intervenor will present their direct. We will have cross for both sides, and then HSP will ask questions of the applicant. From three to, I don't know how long that's going to go, but we'll see, you know, we can manage the time. But from three to four this afternoon, that period of time is for sign up for people from the public that want to give public comment. So from three to four, the plan is to be off the record and then to come back at four for public comment. I'm going to reserve the right to allow public officials and members of the public to testify outside of the order of the agenda if necessary. I do want to thank both attorneys McKinnon, Ashneed, and also Attorney Monahan for getting me all of the testimony that you have from public officials that may not have been able to make it, you know, prior to the hearing. I appreciate that. I heard someone say something. Was someone going to say something?
Yeah, I froze again. I don't know what's going on.
If it freezes, it's okay, as long as you can hear me.
Yeah, and I don't, everybody freezes when it freezes on me.
Okay, so, or can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, all right. So I would like to, at this time, advise the applicants that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel that you may have already addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge about your proposal and for the purpose of clarity. I want to reassure you that we've read your application, we've read your completeness responses, and we've read your prefiled testimony. At this hearing, because it's being held virtually, we ask that all participants, to the extent possible, enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting during the proceedings. Anyone who is not testifying or commenting shall mute their electronic devices, including telephones, you know, other devices not being used to specifically access the hearing. We're just going to ask that you turn the volume down on those. We are going to monitor participants during the hearing, and to the extent possible, counsel for the party should raise hands to make an objection, and the hearing officer will address you. If the hand raised function, if you use that, I understand, it looks like you, it looks like you all don't have access to the hand raised function, so we won't do that, but just let me know if you're going to make an objection. If I don't acknowledge you within maybe three to five seconds, go ahead and make your objection virtually. Virtually. Go ahead and make your objection verbally. Participants should mute their devices and disable their cameras when we go off the record because we're going to continuously record these proceedings. We don't want to make an error and not record something that needs to be recorded. So if you need to confer with your witnesses, then just make sure that you mute your device and you can disable your camera if you so choose. I will provide, as I did in this morning, a warning within like three to five minutes prior to going back on the record once we've gone off the record. Public comment is going to be taken in the order established by OHS, and that's by registration, in that three to four p.m. period. I will call each individual by name when it's his or her time to speak. We'll do another announcement about how public comment is supposed to proceed when we start that four o'clock. At this time, I'm going to ask all of the individuals who are going to testify on behalf of the applicant and the intervenor to raise their hands and be identified by their attorneys so that I can swear you in.
Attorney Mitchell, are you asking that we go around the room and?
State your names.
And state our names.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Diane Kelly.
Ms. Kelly, can you spell your full name for the court reporter?
D I A N E K E L L Y.
Okay.
Dr. Christopher House, C H R I S T O P H E R, H O W E S.
Dr. Eric Velazquez, E R I C, V as in Victor, E L A Z Q U E Z.
Francine LaRusso, F R A N C I N E L O capital R U S S O.
Norman Roth, N O R M A N R O T H.
Okay, and that's it for the applicant, correct?
That's all folks testifying for the applicant, correct?
I'll move over to Stanford Health.
Yes, I will now turn to the witnesses who will be testifying.
Jonathan Bailey, J O N A T H A N E A I L E Y.
Dr. Scott Martin, S C O T T M A R T I N.
Okay, I'm going to ask everyone that announced their names that will be testifying, make sure you raise your right hand for me so I can swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? I'll start with you, Ms. Kelly.
I do.
Dr. House?
I do.
Dr. Velazquez?
I do.
Ms. LaRusso?
I do.
Mr. Roth?
I do.
Mr. Bailey?
I do.
Dr. Martin?
I do.
Okay, thank you both. Thank you all. All right, so at this moment, we are going to go forward with the testimony. I will start with the applicants. To make sure when you're testifying, if you use any acronyms, that you clarify it for the purpose of the record. And we shall begin.
Can I just ask one question? It's the court reporter. What are the attorney's names in the box where it's T O P A O I J Y?
For the?
Attorney for the applicants, Matt McKinnon, M A T T M C K E N N A N.
And John, and John Ashmead, A S H M E A D E.
Okay, and just so, like, maybe when you first speak, just say who you are, because I can't see you in that big table of the conference table, you know, you got your masks on and all, so.
Understood.
For intervenor?
So I get the right person who's speaking.
Right, I just want to make sure, for the purpose of your question, did you also need the name of the intervenors' counsel as well?
Is that?
Patrick Monahan?
Patrick Monahan, I have that.
You have him, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. You all set?
I am all set. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Good morning. For the purposes of social distancing and for the speaker will remove their masks so you can hear us clearly, but the remainder of the people in the room will remain socially distant and will keep their mask on. So with that, my name is Diane Kelly. Good morning and thank you. I'm the president of Greenwich Hospital. I adopt my prefiled testimony. It's my pleasure to be here to speak in favor of the Certificate of Need application to establish elective percutaneous coronary intervention services at Greenwich Hospital. The 206-bed hospital cares for patients in regions of Westchester County, New York, and Fairfield County, Connecticut. It should be noted, we played a significant role in caring for our New York neighbors during the height of COVID pandemic. It is also worth noting how Connecticut hospitals, including both Greenwich Hospital and Stanford Hospital, work together collectively and collaboratively to ensure the community's safety. You will hear testimony this morning supporting in the following areas. The importance of patient choice will be noted. The patients of Greenwich Hospital have ranked their experience consistently in the top 5% using both national and government measures. You will hear high-quality comprehensive care. This proposal should enable physicians to perform both the angiogram and elective PCI in the same local community where the patient originally sought care. Familiar cardiac specialists could manage and monitor patients prior to, during, and after the procedure, improving the continuity of patient care. Another important factor is the cost of healthcare needs to be affordable for both systems and for the patient. There will be no additional costs incurred by the hospital or the system in implementing an elective PCI program here at Greenwich. Patients will personally avoid unnecessary costs associated with travel, including ambulance transfers. In conclusion, we are committed to delivering patient-centered care, believing adding elective PCI to advance cardiac services already provided by Greenwich Hospital. It will further enhance cardiac care services for the patients in the communities we serve. I want to thank you for your time and attention. I encourage you to improve this CON application. And with that, I would like to now turn this over to Dr. Eric Velasquez.
Hold on a second. You froze. Hold on. She's reading really fast, but you froze again. So I got the patients of the community and then.
At that point, I just wanted to take the commission for the thank you for the time and attention to this important matter, and I wanted to turn this over to Dr. Eric Velasquez, our chief of cardiovascular services at Yale School of Medicine.
Let me, let me just interject quickly. I just want to make sure that the court reporter is able to get all the information that she needs to properly transcribe.
Exactly.
Yeah, let us know how we can help you.
Yeah, I keep, it keeps freezing, but, and also, she's reading like really fast.
Okay.
Attorney Mitchell, this is Attorney McKinnon. If we could have a few more minutes beyond the 15 allocated in the agenda, I think that would be helpful with the court reporter understanding the testimony.
Right, so we talked about this during the pre-hearing conference, and you guys are going to have the time that you need. We usually just establish 15 minutes as the initial parameter, but you guys can slow down. Don't worry, we're going to make sure we get everything on the record. Take your time, and then, Debbie, just let me know if there's anything that you need in terms of, you know, making sure everything.
I don't usually have a problem with freezing. I do these all the time here. I don't know if it's something happened with the weather outside or what, but I keep freezing. And also, I'm not familiar with what you guys are all talking about, and that's why when you're reading really fast, it's kind of like.
Difficult to keep up with.
Yeah, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you, Attorney Mitchell.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. All right, so we'll just, everybody just kind of take your time, and we'll speak slow, and we're going to make sure the record is.
Yeah, so the last point we were at with her was services already provided by Greenwich Hospital, so.
Would you mind, would you mind repeating from that part, Ms. Kelly?
So I'm going to start with cost. Healthcare needs to be affordable. Does that help you?
She's nodding yes.
Yeah. There will be no additional cost incurred by the hospital or the system in implementing an elective PCI program. Patients will avoid unnecessary costs associated with ambulance transfers and costs associated when travel is required. In conclusion, we are committed to delivering patient-centered care, and we believe adding an elective PCI to the advanced cardiac services already provided by Greenwich Hospital will further enhance cardiac services for the, for the patients and the communities that we serve. Thank you for your time, retention, and I encourage you to approve the CON application.
Thank you.
I would like to now turn this over to Dr. Eric Velasquez. He's our chief of cardiovascular medicine at Yale School of Medicine.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Eric Velazquez, and I am the chief of cardiovascular medicine at Yale New Haven Hospital, physician-in-chief of the Heart and Vascular Center at Yale New Haven Health, and the Robert Berlin Professor of Medicine and Cardiology at the Yale School of Medicine. I'm also a practicing cardiologist. I adopt my prefiled testimony. My testimony will address the following two areas. One, research and clinical practice guidelines, which offer clinical evidence in support of this proposal. And two, Yale New Haven Health Heart and Vascular Center's expertise in support of the proposed program. The research on elective angioplasty without onsite cardiac surgery led to a significant change to the 2011 American College of Cardiology, American Heart Association, and Society of Coronary Angiographies and Interventional Combined Clinical Practice Guidelines for angioplasty. Specifically, the modification of elective angioplasty without onsite cardiac surgery from a Class III, which was not recommended, to a Class IIb, which is recommended as a benefit equal or greater than the risk recommendation. In March of 2012, the American Heart Association issued a policy statement on PCI without surgical backup, defining two major reasons for providing PCI without onsite surgery. Number one, PCI without onsite surgery is a reasonable consideration for providing local care to patients and families who do not want to travel significant distances or who have certain preferred local physicians. The policy statement emphasized that such centers should have mechanisms in place to ensure high-quality care. There is a growing body of research which demonstrates that patient outcomes are essentially the same in hospitals with or without onsite cardiac surgery. Several changes in technology have improved the efficacy and reduced pre-procedural complications of PCI procedures. In 2014, the American College of Cardiology, American Heart Association, and Society of Coronary Angiography Interventions Combined Expert Consensus Document Update noted that when patients are appropriately selected, most published studies regarding the risks of elective PCI at facilities without onsite cardiac surgical backup have shown the procedures to be relatively safe. The Society of Coronary Angiography Interventions proposed criteria to ensure patient safety focused on patient characteristics and lesion characteristics. Those mean the criteria for high-risk should not undergo elective PCI in facility without onsite surgery. Greenwich Hospital will adhere to a rigorous clinical programmatic requirements and strict angiographic criteria with protocols to identify high-risk patients and lesions prior to the performance of an elective PCI procedure. And these cases would be referred to a center with onsite surgical backup. The Heart and Vascular Center of Yale New Haven Health is uniquely positioned in Connecticut to support the careful expansion of elective PCI without onsite cardiac surgery. The Heart and Vascular Center's medical staff encompasses physician experts in the areas of cardiology and surgery, including specialists in interventional cardiology, electrophysiology, cardiac surgery, transplant surgery, and vascular surgery. Our highly skilled, board-certified interventional cardiologists collectively perform thousands of procedures each year. In 2019 alone, our Heart and Vascular Center interventional cardiology team, including 23 Yale faculty, performed over 480 primary PCIs for acute MI and over 2,000 non-primary or elective PCI. Our faculty all performed procedures at Yale New Haven Hospital, which is among the busiest cardiac cath labs in the state, performing in excess of 1,400 angioplasty procedures in 2019. The current proposed elective PCI program at Greenwich Hospital will operate according to the same policies, procedures, and protocols using the same faculty as our programs at Yale New Haven Hospital. This consistency of care is very important for both physicians and patients alike and results in an optimal experience. The high caliber and experience of the clinical staff assigned to the program has been a major factor in the Greenwich Hospital's primary angioplasty for MI program and its very excellent clinical results. The Heart and Vascular Center and these faculty have demonstrated successful support of an elective PCI program without onsite surgical backup at one of our other affiliated hospitals in the Yale New Haven Health System, Lawrence Memorial Hospital. This program has been operational for over eight years, producing outstanding results for patients. The Lawrence Memorial Program is supported by the same collaborative relationship of Yale New Haven Health and Yale School of Medicine that we propose for the Greenwich Hospital program. This program has operated successfully and reflects a growing body of literature suggesting no differences in outcomes for patients who receive elective PCI at sites without onsite surgical backup versus those who do. In conclusion, the proposed elective PCI program at Greenwich Hospital offers the residents of Greenwich Hospital and their service area the opportunity to receive the full continuum of cardiac services in their local community by one of the nation's leading cardiovascular providers. Based on the body of research cited that demonstrated success of our program at the Lawrence Memorial Hospital and the support of the Yale New Haven Heart and Vascular Center and Yale faculty, I strongly encourage the OHS to support and approve this proposal. I would like to now turn this over to Dr. Christopher House, who's an assistant professor of medicine at Yale University and our chief of cardiology at Greenwich Hospital. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Colonel Mitchell, in the Office of Health Strategy. You guys can hear me okay?
We can hear you.
My name is Dr. Chris House, and I'm medical director of the Yale Heart and Vascular Center at Greenwich Hospital. I am the chief of cardiology at Greenwich Hospital, and I have been the medical director of the primary angioplasty program at Greenwich Hospital since its inception in 2005. At that time in 2005, Greenwich Hospital was the first hospital program in the state of Connecticut to provide emergent angioplasty without surgical backup, and we have been doing so ever since. 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, since that time, without interruption. I am a practicing interventional cardiologist who has worked for Yale School of Medicine since 1997. Myself and my Yale interventional cardiology group have been working at Greenwich since 2005, and we have been performing all of the catheterizations of primary angioplasties over that time.
I froze, okay, hold on, he froze, so I got up to, cardiology group have been working at.
Since, I'm going to
Excuse me, one second.
2005.
Hold on one moment, hold on one moment.
Debbie, I would suggest maybe that you turn off your video, and that may help with your audio performance.
Okay.
Give that a try.
No problem. Yeah, and then, okay.
Let us know if that, if that helps. Sorry for the interruption.
I'm so sorry about this. So it's highly unusual, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Since 2005, myself along with my Yale interventional cardiology group colleagues have been performing catheterization and emergent angioplasty at Greenwich Hospital and have continued to do so at Yale New Haven Hospital. I adopt my prefiled testimony. As part of the HVC, Greenwich Hospital provides extensive inpatient and outpatient services to the community of Greenwich and the surrounding areas. This includes echocardiography, nuclear imaging, stress testing, coronary angiography by CT imaging, pacemakers, diagnostic catheterizations, and emergency or primary angioplasty. Greenwich Hospital's primary angioplasty program, the first program in the state of Connecticut to provide PCI without onsite surgical backup, received permanent approval in 2008, and we have provided highly successful and safe cardiac services to the Greenwich residents and surrounding towns for over 15 years.
Yeah, I froze again. Primary approval in 2008.
We have provided highly successful and safe cardiac services since that time. I'd like to speak briefly about the similarities and differences between primary angioplasty and elective angioplasty. At Greenwich Hospital, we've been doing primary angioplasty for the last 15 years. These are patients that come in acutely to the hospital. They have a very characteristic ECG abnormality called an ST elevation MI, and they're having an acute heart attack at that moment. Typically, these are the sickest patients that cardiologists see. We've been taking these patients directly to the cath lab and treating them for the last 15 years with excellent outcomes and saving people's lives. Elective angioplasty is essentially the same procedure. Catheter is inserted into the patient's body, an angiogram is performed, a blockage is identified, and angioplasty with a balloon is performed to dilate the blood vessel, and then a coronary stent is typically put in. The difference is elective angioplasties is a slightly different group of patients. There's basically two subgroups that form elective angioplasty. The one subgroup, which makes up the largest share of patients, is patients who have what we call acute coronary syndrome. They have a new syndrome suggesting that they may be having a heart problem, shortness of breath or chest pain. They come to the hospital, they get evaluated, they don't have the characteristic STEMI EKG abnormalities, so they can't make it to our emergency primary angioplasty protocol, but they're still in the throes of a heart attack or threatening a heart attack. Those patients typically need to have angiogram and often coronary intervention PCI within the first 24 to 48 hours. They are called elective PCI patients, but it's really a misnomer. This isn't elective. This is urgent life-saving procedures that have to be done in a very time-sensitive period. The third group are a little bit more stable patients. These are sometimes outpatients that have increasing symptoms or an abnormal stress test that warrants further evaluation. These patients too may end up getting an angiogram, may require a PCI, and they would be elective angioplasties as well. Keep going?
Yeah.
The lack of elective angioplasty at Greenwich Hospital results in a disruption of care for patients. Most patients, almost all patients, prefer to be treated locally, close to their home, close to their families, and close to the physicians who know them best and have been caring for them. This has never been more paramount during the current COVID pandemic. Nobody wants to be going elsewhere. Currently, those patients in the two groups I just described, acute coronary syndrome patients and the crescendo outpatients and increasing symptom patients, need to be transferred typically to larger hospitals. Our experience in Greenwich is many of these patients are transpherated or referred to Yale New Haven Health System, either Yale New Haven Hospital or Bridgeport Hospital. They choose to remain in the same health system with the same medical record. These hospitals are encountering high occupancy and demand for services, and patients often incur delays for their elective but truly urgent procedures. The delay to New York City hospitals can be even greater. This community needs to assess the continuity of care, a concept which includes the ability to receive care from diagnosis to treatment, close to home, from familiar trusted physicians. Elective PCI in the local area will help to alleviate the emotional and financial burden imposed on patients and their families who have to leave the service area for treatment. This proposal would not increase healthcare costs, but offers potential savings to health systems and to families by promoting shorter lengths of stay, reduction of redundant work on transfer to a second institution, and eliminates travel costs for patients and families. Dr. Velazquez spoke to this, but I want to mention numerous studies and articles that were presented with this CON application supporting the safety and quality outcomes observed when PCI is performed at hospitals without cardiac surgery. Clearly, PCI is a much safer procedure in 2020 than it was in earlier times. Even in 2005, when I was the first physician in the state of Connecticut to perform an angioplasty without surgical backup, we have gotten better as an institution and as a community at what we do. It is now understood that same-day procedures and even PCIs at ambulatory surgical centers, not at hospitals, are being performed routinely throughout the country. Over the last 15 years, this small primary angioplasty program at Greenwich Hospital has demonstrated high success and safety treating the sickest patients. We participate in national registries and benchmark our outcomes and continue to update our protocols to keep current with the guidelines as they are released. As Dr. Velazquez alluded to, in the last 15 years, studies have indicated that patient selection is a critical factor in outcomes and that volume measures alone may not be the best metrics to measure quality. The 2013 PCI competency document concluded, "In the current era, volume outcome relationships are not as robust as in the past, when balloon angioplasty without stenting was the only treatment regarded." Greenwich Hospital will follow the protocols to identify high-risk patients and high-risk lesions prior to the performance of elective PCI. The majority of patients can have their elective PCI in Greenwich safely and effectively, but the high-risk patients will continue to be transferred to larger centers. These protocols have been successfully implemented at Lawrence Memorial. Their elective PCI has been performed for the last eight years successfully with outstanding outcomes. Not one patient in the LNN program has required emergent bypass surgery. Conclusion, this is a demonstrated need for the elective PCI service in Greenwich, supported by the data showing outmigration to Yale New Haven Health System and to New York hospitals. Primary angioplasty and elective PCI are essentially the same procedure. The only difference is the acuity of the patients. We're currently taking care of the sickest, most acutely ill patients. In fact, the elected patients are much more stable and statistically lower complications are commonly seen. Many of these patients can go home the same day. Access to high-quality, cost-effective cardiac services will be enhanced for this approval, promoting clinical continuity, patient-centered care in their local communities. For all these reasons, I strongly encourage you to consider this application. I turn my remaining time over to Norman Roth, CEO of the Greenwich Hospital.
Good morning and thank you, Dr. House. My name is Norman Roth, and I am the chief executive officer of Greenwich Hospital and executive vice president of the Yale New Haven Health System. And I will be retiring on Friday, October 2nd, so I'm grateful for the opportunity to present testimony today. It has been my privilege to be part of the Yale New Haven Health System for 41 years, the last six of which I've spent at Greenwich Hospital, and it's my pleasure to be here today to speak in support of the certificate of need application to establish elective PCI services at Greenwich Hospital. Just this month, the hospital garnered national attention when prestini awarded the hospital with seven Patient Experience Performance Achievement Awards. Four Pinnacle of Excellence Awards were received for remaining top, for maintaining top performance of excellence in patient experience over three consecutive years in the following areas: ambulatory surgery, inpatient services, outpatient services, and the federal hospital consumer assessment of healthcare providers and systems, commonly known as HCAPs. And three Guardian of Excellence Awards were received for reaching the 95th percentile for four consecutive quarters this year in the following patient care categories: patient experience in ambulatory surgery, the emergency department, and HCAPs inpatient services. It is noteworthy that the time period for these awards included April 1, 2019 through March 31, 2020. And we are especially proud of our staff in achieving national recognition even as we faced the formidable challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic. For the remainder of my testimony, I would like to present three patient stories regarding their care at Greenwich Hospital. The first patient resides in West Harrison, New York, and Greenwich Hospital and Yale Medicine cardiologists are his providers of choice in this region and convenient for him to access cardiovascular care. This patient has undergone two elective PCI procedures on two separate occasions. This patient has undergone two elective PCI procedures on two separate occasions. Both times, the patient had an angiogram at Greenwich Hospital and then was determined to require an elective PCI, which could not be offered at Greenwich Hospital despite the patient's choice to receive cardiovascular care close to home and at this hospital. In the first instance, the patient was transferred by ambulance to Yale New Haven Hospital to undergo the procedure despite the fact that this facility, staff, supplies, and equipment were available to provide the same services at Greenwich Hospital. But at this time, we can only utilize those services for emergency PCI procedures. In the second instance, the patient went home after the angiogram and the elective PCI was scheduled at Yale New Haven Hospital several days later. The patient was subject to unnecessary stress, scheduling, and transportation issues, all of which could have been avoided if elective PCI were offered at the patient's facility of choice. The second patient also chose to receive cardiovascular care at Greenwich Hospital from Yale Medicine physicians as a convenient location with trusted clinicians. Yet, because the hospital does not offer elective PCI, although it does offer the same procedure in emergency situation, the patient was required to travel from his home in Rye, New York to Yale New Haven for three elective PCI procedures. Patient choice should be a factor in healthcare decision-making. The third patient is a 60-year-old male patient who was brought by ambulance to the Greenwich Hospital Emergency Department after collapsing at a Greenwich Hospital club. CPR was initiated by bystanders and EMS was called. EMS arrived and the patient was asystolic, requiring intubation and continued CPR with return of spontaneous circulation. EMS conducted EKG, was positive for myocardial infarction, and MI alert was called into Greenwich Hospital prior to the patient's arrival. The EKG in the emergency department showed ST elevations consistent with a significant heart attack. And the patient was sent for emergent CT scan of the head, which was negative for bleed. And then the patient proceeded on to the cardiac cath lab. Coronary angiogram revealed 99% occlusion of the proximal circumflex of the left anterior descending artery, 90% occlusion of the proximal circumflex artery, and 95% occlusion of the right coronary artery. Percutaneous coronary intervention was performed on an emergent basis with placement of one drug-eluting stent to the left anterior descending artery, which was the culprit lesion which caused the heart attack by Dr. Christopher House. The patient was placed on a hypothermia protocol in guarded condition pending neurologic recovery. Several days later, patient began opening his eyes spontaneously, was weaned off sedation, and we started the rewarming phase of the hypothermia protocol. Patient continued to show improvement and was alert and following commands appropriately. Patient was weaned and excavated from the ventilator, but still had significant issues with his other coronary arteries, which were not stented at the time because they were not the culprit lesion. Since Greenwich Hospital cannot perform elective angioplasty, we were only able to fix his left, his LAD, which was the lesion that caused his heart attack, but not able to treat the right coronary artery and the circumflex arteries. The patient was then transferred for PCI and placement of drug-eluting stents to the right coronary artery and FFR of the circumflex artery. The next day, he was discharged to his home in Greenwich, Connecticut. In conclusion, as discussed by my colleagues earlier this morning, Yale New Haven Health System already has an extensive record of offering the same elective service within its health system at Lawrence and Memorial Hospital. Approval of this CON application ultimately results in eliminating the need for repeat procedures and hospitalizations, travel, and unnecessary stress for patients and their families, and is cost-effective for both patients and the state. The need is justified by the requirements and care of patients who choose Greenwich Hospital and Yale Medicine cardiologists. These patient examples and the experience of the Yale New Haven Health cardiac services fully supports the submitted proposal. And I strongly encourage OHS to approve this application. Thank you, and that concludes our formal testimony.
Thank you.
May I raise a question? Does that... I thought there were five witnesses.
I thought there was one other person as well. I just want to confirm with...
Attorney Mitchell, in the interest of time, we have four people testifying. The fifth is available in the room if necessary for questioning. And the fifth would be happy, I believe, to adopt prefiled testimony if necessary.
Yeah, so that's her usual procedure. So if she could just make a brief statement indicating that she adopts her prefiled testimony, that'd be fine.
Hi, Francine LaRusso. Good morning and thank you. As you heard, we were trying to watch our time. My name is Francine LaRusso and I am the Vice President and Executive Director of the Heart and Vascular Center at Yale New Haven Health System. And I adopt my prefiled testimony.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you wanted to add? Counsel for the applicants, before we go to the interminer, you still have time if you want to.
Nothing further from the applicants.
All right, I'm going to move over to you, Attorney Monahan. Thank you.
Sure. Our first witness is Jonathan Bailey. Can you see me in the camera?
Can you see me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Great, well, good morning. My name is Jonathan Bailey. I am the Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer here at Stanford Health. And before I get into my remarks on behalf of Stanford Health, I want to express our appreciation and thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning to share our opposition, share some of the core points of why we do oppose the application that is before you, and to have our voice heard relative to these proceedings. As I get started, I think it's really important to reiterate the fact that Stanford Health is deeply committed to providing and meeting the needs of the community that we serve. As you saw in my testimony and could read, we are, Stanford Health includes a 305-bed Plaintree Hospital distinction. We are a major teaching affiliate of Columbia University. And we have a medical staff of more than 700 physicians, of which over 50% of those physicians are independent providers caring for this community. Most importantly, and think it's absolutely clear, Greenwich Hospital's proposed program fails to fill a void in community need. There simply is no void to be filled. Stanford Health's well-established program that has been recognized for our quality outcomes, our incredible patient experience, is nearly seven miles from Greenwich Hospital. That's less than a 17-minute transfer. And we have ample capacity for meeting the needs of the community today and for any additional expansion or demand that may come out. There's also, as the applicant has mentioned in their application, other providers in Westchester as well. We're also an organization that believes that where professional standards and clinical guidelines exist, they must be followed because they truly set the foundation for superior outcomes for reducing harm. And what we see here in this application is that Greenwich Hospital proposal does not follow the SEAI, AHA, ACC guidelines. And I truly think it's important that we all be reminded of what is actually included in the 2012 State Facilities and Services Plan and was also been included in the more updated version since then. And I'd like to just take a moment to actually read what is included in that plan. "Connecticut hospitals seeking authorization to initiate an elective PCI program without onsite cardiac surgery capabilities will be required to meet the conditions required in the guidelines and to demonstrate clear public need for the program. The guideline states that it is only appropriate to consider initiation of a PCI program without onsite cardiac surgical backup if this program will clearly fill a void in the healthcare needs of the community. Further, the guideline notes that competition with another PCI program in the same geographic, particularly an established program with surgical backup, may not be in the best interest of the community. We also believe that the applicant fails to address the potential adverse impact on providers in the existing area. At Stanford, we have and we continue to invest resources into our program to ensure that we can continue and meet the needs of the community. The only way for Greenwich Hospital to meet their volume thresholds would be to capture volume from other providers. And this is particularly concerning to us because as the applicant notes in their application, there is a national decline on PCI interventions across this country. Additionally, this is not the first time that Greenwich Hospital has come forth with a seeking approval for providing elective PCI within their hospital. OHS has previously opined on these matters and has reached a conclusion to deny those previous applications. We do not see there to be any compelling reason presented in this application for OHS to reach any other conclusion than it has previously. We also believe that the comparison that Greenwich Hospital has put forth relative to that of Lawrence and Memorial is both misleading and inappropriate. The CON application by Lawrence Memorial to which they were awarded was based on geographic isolation. They are 48 miles away from the closest full-service cardiac program. Further, that application also set forth threshold volumes that would be aligned with the overall guidelines. Lastly, we believe that the OHS CON program goals are absolutely relevant to the proceedings here ahead of us. Ensuring and improving access to high-quality care providers, minimizing the duplication of services, facilitating a stabilized market, and reducing overall healthcare cost delivery are critically important to maintaining and continuing to have a strong healthcare delivery system in Connecticut. And we believe the application here does not achieve upon those goals based on what I just shared. That concludes my remarks and I'll be happy to turn it over to Dr. Martin to provide his commentary.
Thank you.
Attorney Jonathan, before... Doctor, just before we start. Attorney Mitchell, just so there is no oversight in the record, was it clear that... If it isn't clear, I want to make clear that Mr. Bailey, that's his written testimony. And I don't know that that statement was made in the very beginning of the remarks.
All right, so I'm just going to have him step back over and just make that statement.
My apologies, Attorney Mitchell. I did have that written in my notes and failed to do it. As Attorney... I do, sorry, I can't get it out. I do adopt my pre-written testimony as previously said.
Thank you. Thanks, Attorney Monahan, for catching that.
Thank you, Attorney Mitchell, for letting me speak. I would like to adopt my prefiled testimony. I'm Dr. Scott Martin, Director of Interventional Cardiology at Stanford Hospital. I'd like to adopt my prefiled testimony and add a few comments. As a physician, a lot of what we do is guided by judgment and experience. Because a lot of times, we don't know what the right thing to do is.
Attorney Mitchell, could we request that Dr. Martin speak up? We're having a little trouble hearing him on our end.
All right, if you wouldn't mind speaking a little bit louder.
Thank you.
Sure.
You're welcome.
I'm Dr. Scott Martin, Director of Interventional Cardiology at Stanford Hospital. I'd like to adopt my prefiled testimony and add a few comments. As a physician, a lot of what I do is guided by judgment and experience because there's not always a consensus on what the right thing to do is. Which blood pressure medicine to start, which kind of stress test to order. Often, you could go to get a second opinion and get an entirely different answer. But sometimes, we do have a consensus on what the right thing to do is. And when those things are important to public health, our society is issued guidance in expert consensus documents. Guidelines tell us, for example, when to get a mammogram to prevent death from breast cancer, when to get a colonoscopy. In my world, we're told you have guidelines on taking an aspirin when you have a heart attack. And they're important enough that institutions and physicians are graded on their adherence to these guidelines. Often, payment is linked to compliance with guidelines. And in this situation, we have a guideline on the matter at hand. In 2014, all the societies involved in this field, the American Heart Association of Cardiology, which represents all cardiologists, the Society of Coronary Geography Intervention, which represents interventional cardiologists, and the American Heart Association, which represents the whole breadth of cardiac care, including patient advocates and researchers as well as physicians, released a consensus guideline, consensus document, the expert consensus document that has been cited already for an update on percutaneous coronary intervention without onsite surgical backup. And I know that the applicants are aware of the document and they've selectively quoted from it. And it's very clear, I can read from it. "The operation of laboratories performing less than 200 procedures annually that are not serving isolated or underserved populations should be questioned. Hospitals justify the creation of new PCI centers without onsite surgery by stating that they improve access for geographically underserved populations and allow patients to be cared for in close geographic proximity to their own families and physicians. However, multiple low-volume and partial-service PCI centers in a geographic area diffuse PCI expertise, increase costs for the overall health system, and have not been shown to improve access. The development of PCI facilities within a 30-minute emergency transfer time to an established facility is therefore strongly discouraged." That was 2014. There've been a couple of related documents in 2016 and 2020, but they reaffirm that these standards should be continually met. And by applicant's own...
I just want to ask, what page were you looking at in the 2014 document? Just for the record.
This is from Demer et al., page 2619.
Thank you.
By the applicant's own volume estimates, they will not meet these guidelines. And that's the reason I'm opposing you. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Thank you. Anything else, Attorney Monahan?
No, but we have no other witnesses testify. And I don't know what your next procedural plan is, Attorney Mitchell, but might we take a break before cross-examination begins if you're not considering that at this moment?
Actually, I was. And I was hoping that everybody wanted to take a break too. So let me just ask both attorneys McKenna and Ashmead, and also you, Attorney Monahan, how long of a break do you want?
Attorney Mitchell, we would be fine with 10, 15 minutes.
Okay.
We... That is certainly fine with us and certainly need no more than that.
All right. So we will come back. It looks like it's about 11:37. We'll come back at 11:50. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Yes.
All right, just make sure you mute your devices minimally. You can turn off your cameras if you want to. Thank you. We'll be right back at 11:50. Is everyone ready to continue?
Intervener is yes.
Okay.
How many cardiac surgeries they do. Because they don't do enough.
She asked if we're ready.
Attorney Mitchell, the applicants are here and ready.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to attorneys McKennan and Ashmead for cross of the intervenor's witnesses.
Sure. I would like to cross Mr. Bailey.
I just want to make sure he's -- there he goes.
This is the court reporter. Which attorney is doing the cross?
For Mr. Bailey, it will be John Ashmead.
Okay, thank you. Everybody ready?
Yes.
You can proceed when you're ready, Attorney.
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Bailey. This is John Ashmead. Just to want to clarify a few statements from your prefiled testimony. You noted that there are four full-service cardiac programs in the geographic region. What are the four that you believe are in the geographic region?
Sure. Can you reference which page you're on in my prefiled testimony?
Sure. Let me just -- Just a moment. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
I thought maybe I'll turn right to it.
I didn't hear you?
Why would you turn right to it?
What page you have it on?
No, I'm on actually page three. I think I found where you're talking about, despite the presence. But I can answer your question.
It is correct that there are only two. It's Stanford Hospital and Westchester Medical Center, correct?
So in the geographic area, we are defining --
There are only two. Is that correct?
No. There are four existing cardiac surgical programs with onsite, or PCI programs with onsite surgical backup. That would be Bridgeport Hospital, St. Vincent's Hospital, Stanford Health, and Danbury.
But they're not in the geographic region that we are talking about today, correct? Bridgeport Hospital and St. Vincent.
The ones that I've identified are all in Fairfield County, this geographic area.
All right, so moving forward. On page three of your prefiled testimony, you indicate that Stanford Health, and I quote, "supports the use of evidence-based guidelines in CON proceedings," correct?
Correct.
Okay, and in connection with that, you, in connection with that, you know, you have relied on the 2012 OHS service plan and the 2011 PCI surgical backup policy guidance published by the ACC and the AHA, correct?
And the SEI, the consensus guidelines, yes.
Okay. And back then, the primary concern in terms of volumes for facilities performing elective procedures, the concern was they wanted the physicians there to have as many procedures as possible to protect patient safety, correct?
I'm going to object to the form. I think if the attorney is referring to a statement in the document that states that premise, I'd like the witness to have the opportunity to review it.
Is that what you're doing, Attorney Ashmead? I just want to make sure that's correct.
Let me, I will draw the question and restate it.
Okay.
Okay. Let me ask you this. In the 2012 guidelines adopted by OHS, there are certain minimum procedure requirements that are recommended, correct?
Do you mind pointing me to where you are referencing, please?
Okay. In the March 7/20 guideline, I don't know if this is in your prefiled testimony, the document that you attached. It says, page two, "Programs should adhere to strict patient selection criteria." Do you see that bullet point? That's the second bullet point on -- That's the second bullet point on the second half of the page.
Are you talking about within the state facilities plan?
Within the, you, the attachment to your prefiled testimony.
Sure.
Okay, so do you see that second bullet point?
One second, just make sure I got, so I can read along with you here.
Okay, so it's, actually, it's a third bullet point. It says, these policies, and I'm just reading the top sentence. These policy guideline applies to hospitals conducting both primary PCI and elective PCI. They should have an annual institutional volume of at least 200 to 400 cases. Do you see that?
Yeah, I do see that. You're referring, just to be clear, you're referring to the AHA, not the consensus guidelines, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And that's attached to your
Just make it.
You attach that document as an exhibit to your prefiled testimony, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and this was a guideline from 2012, correct?
Believe that is correct.
Okay, and your belief is that this, you know, we should, we should make, OHS should make decisions based on the evidence, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and we now have, since 2012, we're now in 2020, we have eight years of experience to review. Is that correct?
There are certainly eight years between now and 2020, yes, I agree with that.
And, and since that point in time, there have been other recommendations that have come forward, correct?
Object to the form.
Okay. If there's a. State the question.
Okay.
Okay, since, since 2012, in 2016, and I think this is attached as intervenor S.
Maybe we have a moment to get that document.
Yeah, take the time you need, yep.
You have the document?
Yes, sir.
All right, in, in that document, there is, it states, "In addition, although clinical competence guidelines acknowledge only a moderate correlation between operator, percutaneous coronary intervention volume and mortality, for each operator, a minimum PCI volume of 50 per year is recommended averaged over two years."
Here's an objection. Where are you reading from and are you talking about an operator versus facility? Because the issue here is facility.
I'm going to allow that. I just, can you, can you direct us to where, which page you're on?
Right, this is on the second page. On the right, right-hand side of the first full paragraph.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you mind restating your question?
Sure. So in the 2016 document, on that, in that paragraph, in the, it states, "In addition, although clinical competence guidelines acknowledge only a moderate correlation between operator, percutaneous coronary intervention volume and mortality for each operator, a minimum PCI volume of 50 is recommended." It's fair to say what this, this document is suggesting since 2012 is, is that there has been an improvement in the practice of performing elective PCI procedures, correct?
Yes, objection.
What's the objection?
I have no, no problem with the witness answering a question about the words, but this is not a doctor. The Dr. Martin may be able to address that, but.
He raised it, I'm still, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just let me, let him finish his objection and then we'll turn over to you, Attorney Ashmead. Go ahead, Attorney Monahan.
Yeah, if there's a precise question about what the statement says and the witness is asked whether he understands what the statement says, I have no problem with that, but then to extrapolate and interpret the clinical interpretation from a non-clinician, I believe is inappropriate.
Okay, and then Attorney Ashmead, your response?
Sure, so this witness has submitted this document in his prefiled statement and referenced it and used it as a basis to form some of the conclusions in his prefiled statement, so I'm simply asking, I'm simply trying to understand or, or, you know, raise this issue with him because this is what he's relying on for his statements.
Well, if I may just add, and then before you rule, Attorney Mitchell, then would I, can I kindly suggest that Attorney Ashmead read the paragraph, the whole paragraph, that includes the statement before the words "in addition"? Would you read the whole paragraph?
I can read the whole paragraph, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, clinical competence guidelines state that in order to maintain proficiency while keeping complications at a low level, a minimum volume of greater than 200 PCIs per year be achieved by all institutions. In addition, although the competence guidelines acknowledge only a moderate correlation between operator, percutaneous coronary interventions, volumes and mortality for each operator, a minimum PCI volume of 50 per year is recommended. And so it's fair to say that the guidelines are focusing on maintaining physician proficiency, correct?
I don't agree with you. I believe in reading that paragraph, there are two aspects that are called out specifically in it. There is an operator aspect, the physician clinician, and there is an institutional, which you read there at the beginning part of that criteria, which still remains at greater than 200 cases per year.
Right, but the focus, the reason why you want that is to maintain physician proficiency, correct?
Yeah.
It says clinical competence guidelines state that in order to maintain proficiency.
I think the witness has answered.
All right, I didn't get that, so I'm just going to ask, is that your thought about that? Is that it's to maintain physician proficiency?
Let me clarify that I am not a clinician, I am not a physician, so I don't believe it is in my ability to opine on the proficiency and what is required for clinical proficiency. What I can answer is, when you look at the ability to provide high-quality care, it goes well beyond the physician to be able to do such and really requires the entire system working together with a high enough volume to be able to satisfy the clinical competencies. And that is why it is important to point out that there is a 200 case threshold for institutions because it does go beyond just the provider.
Okay. Additional questions, Attorney Ashmead?
Sure. Just one moment. Now, looking at the AHA document that you attached to your statement, the fourth paragraph, it indicates that a good reason, a second reason for elective, let me know if you have it.
Any.
Okay, it says, "The second reason for elective PCI without surgical backup is to provide local care to accommodate patients and families who do not want to travel significant distances or have certain preferences with their local physicians." And so the, the argument that Greenwich Hospital is making in terms of the argument that Greenwich Hospital is making in terms of a community need or requirement is based on the fact that our local Greenwich community, their preference is to receive their treatment at Greenwich Hospital, correct?
So I don't know if I can opine on the argument they're making specifically, but if that's what you stand, I think the important aspect here is pulled up from this guideline that you reference on this paragraph is moreover, that Stanford Health, as I stated in my opening remarks and included in the testimony, we are purely, nearly seven miles away from Greenwich Hospital, that's a 17-minute transfer. And as I noted as well, we have an open medical staff. So as this statement calls out for wanting to be able to care for their local providers, we have an open medical staff and we are happy to accept applications from any of those providers that wish to be able to care for their patients.
But the fact of the matter is, as you say, you're seven miles away, but then the patients continue to come to Greenwich Hospital for their treatment and we should respect their choices, correct?
I don't believe I can speculate on certain things about what patient choices are or not and what may be driving patient choice. I'd just come back to the fact of the matter is that we have an organization that meets the consensus guidelines with the minimum number of cases and we have an open medical staff.
Right.
In order to satisfy what is spelled out here within this guideline, we are clearly able to ensure that such a requirement would be able to be satisfied.
Right, but, okay, so, so let's look at the statistics over, strike that. If we look at the choices being made by Greenwich Hospital patients, they are coming here and then they're going, they're being referred to Yale New Haven Hospital and Bridgeport Hospital, is that correct?
I've got to object, that's what you I object, if that's what you're repeating is in your application and in testimony, that is correct. You have stated that over and over.
Okay.
You're asking him to acknowledge that. I don't have a problem with the question.
Is it, was it just for acknowledgement purposes?
Just for acknowledgement purposes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm aware that that's what you stated in your test, in your prefiled testimony.
And in terms of your application, your claim is that if Greenwich Hospital is able to perform elective procedures, let's strike that. In the last four years, how many patients have been referred from Greenwich Hospital to Stanford for elective PCI?
I do not have that information in front of me to be able to answer or address your question. Happy to go ahead and follow up on that question, but I don't have that data in front of me.
We could provide a late file on that if that is important to the hearing office.
Okay, but it is your.
It's okay, Attorney Ashmead, you didn't know I was going to speak. We can make that determination at the end if we need it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Attorney Ashmead.
Sure. But it's your, you've made the contention that if, if a program is, becomes available at Greenwich Hospital, it will have a negative impact on the program at Stanford Hospital, correct?
The assertion made in my testimony is that any additional applicants or awarded program in this geographic area will have an adverse impact on other local providers.
Right, but, but you don't have, you don't know the numbers at this point in terms of the potential loss of volume at Stanford, Stanford Health, correct?
What I
I'm going to object to the extended calls for speculation.
It didn't, I just said he doesn't know the numbers.
Okay. So I do not know the numbers and to answer your question would require me to speculate on something I don't expect.
You are aware that at least since 2013, LNM, a facility that we would agree is geographically isolated, has performed at least 670 elective procedures, correct?
I would have to confirm that data. You're stating a number that I would not be familiar with necessarily.
Okay.
Do you have information that was filed that we could reference?
That's in our, that's in our filed documents. Let's assume that for the moment that that number is correct. We have only, there's only been two referrals to YMH during that time period of 2013 to 2019. That sort of information would suggest that these, that the program itself has met all safety requirements, correct?
I'm going to object to the form of the question because it delves into the clinical. If, if the question is asking what the guideline is because of the preface in the question about LNM being an isolated geographic area, I have no problem with the witness answering whether it meets the guideline or not based on his non-clinical understanding.
Any response, Attorney Ashmead, before I make the ruling on the objection?
I mean, the witness has testified that he, in his, in his prefiled testimony, that we shouldn't consider, we shouldn't consider LNM, let's strike that.
Okay.
The witness has testified in his prefiled testimony that let me strike the question altogether and move on.
Okay.
In your prefiled testimony, you raise concerns. In your prefiled testimony, you raise concerns...
Attorney Mitchell, this is Attorney McKenon.
Yes.
While Attorney Ashmead is identifying the next line of questioning, if I could ask a point of clarification with respect to the cross-examination thus far?
Yes.
One point, to be clear, and I thought I heard the answer this way, but Mr. Bailey, I believe you identified that your testimony does not identify the number of patients that Stanford would lose as a result of Greenwich Hospital adding elective PCI, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I believe that you said that you did not include that within your prefiled testimony because that would be speculative. Is that correct?
Can you restate your question to make sure I answer it appropriately and accurately?
I'm asking whether you stated previously upon cross-examination that you did not include volume as to patients Stanford may lose as a result of this proposal because that would be speculative.
No, I don't believe that's the way I answered the question. I believe the question answering is, I don't have that information right now to try to guess or speculate at any data that I don't have in front of me would just cause for speculation on impact that was being asked.
But your, but your testimony does present or argue that our addition of elective PCI would impact Stanford, is that correct?
I believe the, to address your question, adding any additional program in a situation where there is a declining national trend on PCI volume will have adverse impact on any provider in that geographic area. Regardless on the specifics on the volumes, there's going to be adverse impact to the community that we serve because the qualifications to the guidelines will be common.
Yet, you don't identify a precise number of patients Stanford may lose as a result of Greenwich Hospital serving its patients locally who have chosen Greenwich Hospital, is that correct?
I'm going to object, ask and answer, this was raised as a point of clarification and now it's becoming a, in a way, sort of going after an answer that apparently is not appreciated by counsel and has been asked and answered several times now.
Any response, Attorney McKenon, before I make the ruling?
No, I can move on. And...
Are we dealing with, just so for my benefit, are we dealing with two attorneys examining each of our witnesses?
Attorney Monahan, I am asking questions while Attorney Ashmead is gathering his thoughts to ask further questions. I believe that's entirely appropriate, correct?
I'm just asking if that's the procedure we're following, that's all. And I'm asking that of the hearing officer, not you.
So, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and interject and say that it's okay if Attorney McKenon is going to ask some additional questions of the witnesses.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Attorney Monahan.
And Mr. Bailey, you testified that it would be common sense, I believe, that our addition of this program or any other program, for that matter, would impact Stanford Hospital, is that correct?
You use the word "common sense," which I'm not sure is a defined term that I can say that how I'm going to answer your question. So, can you, can you define when you're talking about common sense? What exactly you're defining as common sense here?
Yes, let me put it differently. Have you identified any market studies in your testimony to show there would be an impact on Stanford Hospital?
Ask and answer, but you can't answer.
So, no, in my testimony, I do not...
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm actually going to allow that. Can you repeat what your response was?
Sure, absolutely happy to, Attorney Mitchell. So, no, in my testimony, I do not include any market studies on impact to Stanford Hospital on the addition of this program.
And has Stanford Hospital prepared any financial analysis to determine what the impact on its service would be if this service were offered at Greenwich?
No, we have not prepared any financial statements related to this.
So, it's accurate to say that there's no evidence in the record as to the volume or the financial impact on Stanford as a result of this proposal?
I can purely state to the information that I submitted and can testify against and can affirm that there is no specific volume impact included in my testimony related to Stanford Hospital.
Just to be clear, the question was, there's nothing in the record to show either a volume or financial impact on Stanford Hospital, is that correct?
Go ahead, Attorney Monahan.
I'm going to object to the form of the question because the testimony, the question involves more than just, it could involve a broader definition of the financial impact on Stanford Hospital because the prefiled testimony talks about the dilution of quality in relation to numerous below 200 PCI elective facilities being implemented in an area where there is a program like Stanford Hospital that satisfies the national guidelines. Now, how that bears out financially, I think there is a financial impact, but the way the question is being framed and the way the witnesses candidly answer, there's been no dollars and cents, but there is indeed a potential financial impact. So, if we're spilling into interpretation...
Attorney Mitchell, I'm going to have to object, Attorney Monahan is testifying. What I'm asking about is what's in the record, and there's nothing in the... And my point being with Mr. Bailey is that there's nothing in the record that indicates a number of patients lost or a financial impact, and I want clarification on that point.
I'm going to allow it, and then I just want a simple yes or no on that.
My knowledge, there is nothing that we have included in our testimony that would specify specific numbers.
All right, at this point, can we move on from that point?
And just to clarify at that point, Mr. Bailey mentioned specific numbers, that's both numbers of patients and financial numbers, correct?
I think, I think that's clear, can you move on to the next one?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Bailey, you mentioned that national trends show declining PCI volumes, correct?
Correct.
Are you aware of state trends in PCI volume?
I am aware that there are state trends that would be pulled out, though I believe it was submitted in the application by Greenwich Hospital, the reference specifically to the national trends.
So, you are aware of state trends, correct?
I am aware that there are state trends related to volumes of PCIs in the state.
And does your testimony cite state trends?
My testimony does not cite state trends.
And would it be accurate to say that the trend in the state of Connecticut from fiscal year 18 to 19 show an increase in PCI volume?
I, I'm sorry, cannot answer your question, I don't have that data in front of me.
But you are generally aware of state trends related to PCI volume?
Yeah, but let me clarify my answer to your question. I'm aware that there would be state trends because this is data that's available, I do not have data in front of me.
Okay, and you understand that this application is for approval by the state of Connecticut summarizing in part state trends?
I'm going to object to the, I think it mischaracterizes the application.
Any response for, from, for that, Attorney McKenon?
Yes, I think the Office of Healthcare Access and the Health Systems Planning Unit is required to look at clear public need within a community, that community being the state of Connecticut as well as the surrounding service area of Greenwich Hospital. And the intervenor is testifying that he's aware of state trends but is not testifying as to where that trend is going. And it's difficult for me to understand how the intervenor can make a claim as to declining volume when the trend showed the opposite.
So, let me, no, I don't, I don't want you guys to go back and forth over that specific question. Can, let me just ask Attorney McKenon if you can restate the question?
We've established that you're generally aware of state trends related to PCI, correct?
I'd like to just clarify, I'm aware that there would be data available to understand state trends. I do, I am not aware and do not have the data in front of me to be able to speak to what those trends would be in the state of Connecticut or any state.
So, prior to filing your testimony claiming there was a decline in volume, you did not review the statewide trends, is that correct?
That is correct.
And would you also agree that state and local trends are more important or precise than national trends?
Unfortunately, as a, as a non-clinician, that would really require me to speculate about clinical trends and clinical bases that I am, I am not well informed to be able to answer your question.
So, I have to ask the question again because I don't believe it's, in fact, a clinical question, it's a market volume question which your testimony speaks to. It should be a fairly straightforward answer, local and state trends are more precise than national trends, is that correct?
I'm going to object on two grounds. One is, I don't think it's appropriate to admonish the witness about what, what you believe is answered, whether it should be straightforward or not, if he's trying his best to explain and answer. But second, when the application and the prefiled testimony of the applicants refers to national guidelines that contain data about a national decline in PCI volume, I think it is, you're, we are going now in a direction where you're trying to separate a state from a national guideline that has been utilized by the applicants themselves. The witness has, witness has answered that he is not aware of Connecticut trends. I don't know how much clearer it can be.
I'm going to sustain the objection.
Attorney Mitchell, that's not precisely my question. My, my question for the witness is whether local and state trends are more precise and accurate than national trends.
All right, I'm going to ask, do you know the answer to that question?
In this situation, I do not know whether that would be applicable to be more precise or not. I don't feel comfortable with the answer to that question.
Attorney Mitchell, we have nothing further at this point with Mr. Bailey. We do have a few questions for Dr. Martin.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dr. Martin, Attorney McKenon for the applicants, thanks for joining us.
Morning.
You are an interventional cardiologist, is that correct?
Correct.
And you joined Stanford Hospital in 2015, is that right?
Correct. Yes.
And you're an employee of Stanford Medical Group, is that right?
Yes.
And could you tell me how many interventional cardiologists are employed by your medical group?
Sure, there are two interventional cardiologists employed by our medical group, and there are two other interventional cardiologists on staff here are not employed.
And you were not at Stanford Hospital when Greenwich Hospital filed its original CO, CON application for elective PCI in 2012, is that right?
Correct.
And since your time at Stanford, your testimony highlights various improvements in technology, including the cath level at Stanford, is that right?
Yes.
And you would agree that one of the reasons for making those improvements is to improve safety and quality of patient care, is that right?
Sure.
And you personally perform both primary and PCI, elective PCI at Stanford Hospital?
Yes.
And approximately how many procedures do you do a year?
It varies, but on the average, 100 to 150 PCIs a year.
And all of those procedures are performed at Stanford Hospital?
Yes.
And would you agree that since you joined Stanford in 2015, quality has improved at the hospital over that period of time?
That's a hard thing to measure. In terms of quality, for some time, PCI has been reasonably safe, so our quality outcomes are measured in terms of emergency surgery and patient survival, and those numbers are very good year to year. So, I don't know that I can cite a measurable change in quality over my time here, but I would say it's remained excellent throughout that time.
So, you would agree that quality hasn't significantly decreased at Stanford Hospital, that's correct?
Correct.
And I'm assuming, but would like to confirm, you noted that all your procedures are done at Stanford Hospital. That would mean that you haven't performed elective PCI at a facility without cardiac backup since your time at Stanford?
That's true.
So you have no personal experience over the past five years performing this procedure? In a facility without cardiac backup?
Correct, it's the same procedure, but I, but no, I have not performed it somewhere without cardiac surgery backup.
But you do agree that it's the same procedure?
I, it's a reasonably safe procedure in that routinely, you know, when I consent the patient for the procedure, it's elective, I tell them less than 1% risk of some major complication. However, those major complications are things like emergency surgery, stroke, death. So it's all relative in terms of what you mean by safe procedure.
But, but it's the same procedure, you just happen to not have performed it in a facility without cardiac backup in five years, correct?
Correct, I have not performed it in a facility without cardiac surgery backup.
Have you ever performed PCI without backup?
No, all of the PCIs in my career have been centers with cardiac surgery.
So you have no experience providing elective PCI without cardiac backup?
Correct.
Your testimony cites certain national trends with respect to PCI. Would you agree that PCI at Stanford has declined over the past, say, three years?
I, I think it's declined in 2020, largely related to COVID. But prior to that, I think there's been some variation year to year, but I wouldn't say it's a trend.
How many PCIs did you perform in fiscal year 17?
I don't have that in front of me, but I think I have it nearby if you want me to find the numbers. Or, or.
If you could provide the numbers showing the number of PCI you performed in fiscal year 17, 17, 18, and 19 would be preferred.
I'm going to object, I'm not object, I'm going to interject. We will decide at the end which, which documents, if any, we need to make a decision. So just going to whole, ask you to hold off on making agreements about what should be provided for OHS.
Dr. Martin, did you happen to review the rebuttal testimony filed by the applicants?
I read it this morning.
And do you have any reason to dispute that the volume, according to the patient census report of the Connecticut Hospital Association, shows a decline in PCI volume at Stanford Hospital?
Can you refer the witness to exactly what you're referring to, just so we're clear on, on, on the language?
I will actually withdraw that question and point the intervenor to page 436 of the Certificate of Need application.
Are you talking about the original CON application?
I'm referring specifically to the Bates stamped number applied to the completeness question response.
I may have a moment. Attorney Mitchell, I think, I think I can pull that. I'm sorry, Matthew, what page did you say?
Page 436. Do you have the page?
I have that.
The table on this page identifies PCI volume according to the Connecticut Hospital Association's patient census report. Do you have any reason to dispute the accuracy of this table?
Table two here?
Correct.
I, I do. The numbers for Stanford Hospital, I believe, are inaccurate. Particularly the primary PCI numbers are significantly higher than our primary PCI volume per study. And I believe the total PCI volume numbers are also above what I have internally.
So the totals are too high, but the primary numbers are too low, is that correct?
So the primary PCI volumes also are higher than what I know to be accurate.
Ross, may I take a look at the graph as well, just to understand what the questions are about to see if I.
Yes.
Attorney Mitchell, if I may just make a comment before the question is presented or, or attempted to be answered by the witness about the graph that has been referred to.
Yeah.
This is a graph of the patient census report provided by the Connecticut Hospital Association. Number one, it doesn't distinguish between primary and elective PCI. Number two, it doesn't define the terms with which it categorizes the various numbers in the columns for fiscal years. Those are important because Stanford Hospital, Alamo Haven Hospital, Greenwich Hospital may have internal numbers and definitions different than how the Connecticut Hospital Association methodology comes up with this graph, graph. So to, to, to point to whether this is an accurate representation of what is internally accurate here, I believe is beyond the scope of this witness's knowledge. Unless we had someone who could actually understand what definitions were used to formulate this graph and what, and how they correlate what definitions we use in turn. So for that reason, I don't think this witness is qualified to comment on the accuracy of that graph.
Any response, Attorney McKinnon?
Attorney Mitchell, I can restate my question.
Okay.
Dr. Martin, at this point in time, you're not clear as to the number of PCIs you performed in 2017, is that right?
Me personally or the institution?
The institution.
I, I don't have an exact number for you.
Okay, and you don't have an exact number for 18 or 19 either?
Correct, I could get that.
Okay.
My number will be slightly different than what's in table two here.
Right, I understand. And do you have a general sense as to whether that number is increasing or decreasing?
I, I think as I stated, in 2020, this year, it certainly decreased. In April and May and March, there were circumstances beyond our control that led to a near elimination of elective PCI.
Right, but over the course of 17 to 19?
It varied a little year to year. I would say overall, to me, the trend seemed flat.
And I believe your testimony states that volumes are declining.
Yeah, nationally volumes are declining. Certainly in local markets, you'll see changes from one year to the next. And even the national trend, if you pick one year to another, there could be, you know, move in the opposite direction. It doesn't belie there being a trend.
And you would agree that the local trends are probably more predictive than national trends?
Objection, predictive of what?
A withdrawal. Would it be accurate to say that despite flat volume at Stanford Hospital, quality has increased?
As I said before, quality is a hard thing to measure, but I would say, as, as before, it's remained excellent.
And quality is not always tied to volumes, is that correct?
When we look at the guidelines that were formed in 2014, they reviewed all the available data and a wide range of experts in the field who did correlate that there was, seemed to be a drop off in quality when less than 200 PCIs were performed at a facility in a year. And to my knowledge, there's been no study or expert consensus since then, say otherwise.
And I saw that in your, your testimony. If I could refer to you to the 2014 SCAI ACCAHA consensus documents.
I have it here.
A couple of questions related to that document. One, could you confirm for the record that that's document was prepared in 2014, thus it's six years old?
It was published in 2014. I suspect the preparation went back a bit from that, but it was published in 2014.
So the data that is incorporated within the publication is even more aged than the report itself, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you would acknowledge that that document states that in 2014, 45 states allowed elective PCI without onsite surgery, is that correct?
I believe you.
I can refer you to page 2611, but if you're agreeing, we can move on.
So agree with you.
The statement also references a variety of studies, meta-analyses. And I'm reading on page 2612, which states that there are no indications of increased mortality or greater need for cabbage for either primary or non-primary, primary PCI at sites without cardiac surgery. Would you agree with that statement?
Yeah, I think, I would agree that that's there. I would also point though to page 2616, where the same document says, this is in paragraph, the first full paragraph, "An institutional volume threshold of less than 200 PCIs annually appear to be consistently associated with worse outcomes." To be clear, worse outcomes in what I do are people having heart attacks and having cardiac surgery and dying.
But you acknowledge that the bolus of evidence shows that there's really no difference in mortality or need for cabbage for primary or non-primary, regardless of the fact that they don't have onsite backup?
I'm going to object. The, I think the question calls for a condensation into a singular opinion about a very lengthy document that has been quoted in several instances by the, by the, both the applicant and by the intervenor. The document does speak for itself. It's in the record. It will be reviewed by the Office of Healthcare Strategy. And the doctor has just pointed out what he felt was an important part to answer that question.
I can move on, Attorney Mitchell.
Okay, Attorney McKinnon. Thank you, Attorney McInnes.
Dr. Martin, you would agree that when the 2012 guidelines cite the 2011 guidelines, they stipulated a new classification with respect to offering PCI without cardiac backup, is that right?
You're just, you're just asking if offering PCI without cardiac backup was a new, was new, yes.
Right, and was that a significant change in the clinical practice at the time?
Yes.
And is it also correct that 2011 guidelines state that elective PCI might be considered in hospitals without onsite surgery if they have planning for program development, rigorous clinical and angiographic criteria for patient selection?
Yes, and, and meet institutional and procedural guidelines related to volume and other factors.
And your testimony cites the 2012 consensus document, which refers to refers to the 2012 AHA policy statement on PCI. And are you familiar with that document?
Which one?
The 2012 AHA policy statement on PCI. Page number 2615 of the 2012 statement.
Again, for just clarification, you're referring to the AHA American Stroke Association document?
The 2012 AHA policy statement on PCI. The reference is 2615 of the 2000.
Is it dated March 7, 2012?
I'm referring to a statement in the 2014.
I apologize. May we have a moment to get to the right document?
The 2014?
The 2014 consensus document. Page 2615.
And like three different documents.
Do you need a moment? It's okay.
Yeah, just to understand what document we're getting to.
No, I think the page number isn't consistent. It comes out in different journals. It has different page numbers. I'm referring to his testimony.
Is he attached?
If it's helpful, I'm referring to the 2014 guidelines attached to Dr. Martin's prefiled testimony.
Thank you.
I think we're good. I appreciate the time and the patience, and we are ready to proceed.
Okay, and that document provides two major reasons for elective PCI without cardiac backup. Correct? I'm asking because it was attached to your testimony, and I assumed you'd be familiar with the document.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the document.
Okay. And one of those reasons is that PCI without onsite surgery is reasonable for providing local care to patients and families who do not want to travel significant distances or who have certain preferred local physicians. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And do you agree with that statement?
I, I do. I agree that patients should have the choice to stay local if at all possible, if it can be done safely. And for that reason, we're right here. Seven miles away, I can hit a golf ball from my office into Greenwich. And we're happy to allow the Yale physicians to come here and perform PCI if they want to do so at a facility that meets the gold standard guidelines for volume.
And just to be clear, that statement identifies two reasons, one being traveling significant distances, but also the importance of patients having the ability to receive care from quote unquote, certain preferred local physicians, right?
Correct.
And you agree with the second part of that statement? That it's important that patients have access to preferred local physicians?
Yes, I think that's, that's part of the value of our having an open medical staff is that any physician can come here to provide care to patients in need.
Right, but if a patient chooses a physician who's not on the medical staff at Stanford Hospital, you would agree that the patient's choice of a preferred local physician is important?
I think patient choice is one factor. But I don't think patient choice should override safety and best practices when it comes to meeting guidelines for care.
You would agree that care close to home is, is important? That's right?
I think when possible, yes.
The 2014 consensus statement on page 2616, attached to your prefiled testimony, cites the 2013 guidelines. Those guidelines conclude, and this was in 2013, the current, in the current era, volume outcome relationships are not as robust in the past. Do you agree with that statement?
Yes, I, you know, and I cited previously the next statement, which is that however, institutional volume threshold of less than 200 PCIs annually appear to be consistently associated with worse outcomes.
And on page 2619 of that same consensus document. You cited a statement that speaks to operation of facilities with less than 200 procedures annually that are not serving isolated or underserved populations. Is it correct that that statement does not say these facilities cannot perform these procedures?
I'm not a lawyer, but my understanding is for this office to decide whether it can be performed here. The document provides guidance, but it doesn't say what it can and can't do.
And the document simply says that those programs should be questioned, correct?
I see words like questions, strongly discouraged.
And that those programs might need to be closed, but only if there's not satisfactory outcomes, right?
Objection. Are you asking if those words are in the document or if that's?
I'm asking if Dr. Martin agrees with the statement within the document.
I agree that any laboratory that cannot maintain satisfactory outcomes should be closed. I think that's reasonable.
So if a laboratory performs less than 200, but could maintain satisfactory outcomes, that laboratory should remain open?
So in the guidelines, they recommend that laboratories that can't meet 200 outcomes only be approved, only be allowed, you know, allowed to operate if they meet some other specific need, for example, for access. You know, if they're far from any other facility, then in that certain circumstance, then yes, they'd be allowed to stay open if they meet quality standards.
So a low-volume provider that meets quality outcomes should remain open?
The same question, and there was an answer given. And I do not appreciate the fact that the same question was answered when, when the answer was given. If the doctor wants to repeat the same answer, the same question, and Attorney Mitchell wants that, then I have no objection.
Okay, Attorney McKinnon, help me understand the distinction between those questions.
I believe my question was a yes or no question, and the witness did not answer yes or no.
All right, repeat your question with regard to, repeat it one more time.
Would it be consistent with the guidelines for a low-volume program to stay open as long as they meet satisfactory outcomes?
I'll allow that question.
And you want just a yes or no to that?
Correct.
If you can.
Yes, the document does specify that patients that are serving underserved populations and don't meet the volume standard can, can remain open if they meet satisfactory outcomes.
Thank you. And you would agree that quality outcomes are more important than volume?
I'm, you know, object.
On what basis, Attorney Monahan?
I don't understand the, the relationship between a quality outcome and the word volume. There's no there's, the question is which is more important? And there's no reasonable correlation between those two terms. I don't understand what the question means, is what I'm saying.
Can I just clarify the
Yes.
testimony of the intervenor is that there's no reasonable correlation between quality and volume? Is that accurate?
No.
So there's no correlation, just to be clear?
I'm sorry. Repeat what I'm answering?
I believe I heard the intervenor state that there was no correlation between quality and volume. Is that right?
I didn't say that.
Attorney Monahan, I believe I heard you say that there was no correlation between quality and volume. Is that right?
I stated an objection. You can ask a question to the witness.
Okay. Dr. Martin, do you believe that there's a strong correlation between quality and volume?
So I think there, it's a difficult question to answer. I think for some things, there clearly is a strong correlation. For example, for heart transplant.
Right, but we're talking about elective PCI.
Yes, well, I can answer that. For elective PCI, as you, you've read the documents, you know, that there's correlation, once you've reached a certain threshold, doesn't seem to be a strong correlation. That facilities that maintain over 200 PCIs, that the, the relationship between volume and quality seems less strong than it has in the past. But it hasn't been studied well in facilities that don't meet that standard.
And you would agree that and we may have covered this, but just to be completely clear, the 2013 guidelines, which we referenced previously, say the volume outcome relationship is, is not robust?
Again, for facilities where over 200 PCIs are done, it's, it does state and it's known that it's less robust than in the past.
And is there a particular statement within the guidelines you can point to that shows the quality-volume correlation is either more or less robust for low-volume facilities as compared to high-volume facilities?
In the 2013 document, it's on page 445, is important to note that a signal exists suggesting an institutional volume threshold of less than 200 PCIs per year appears to be consistently associated with worse outcomes across the various studies.
And what was the date of that document?
This is from the 2013 guidelines you asked me about.
Attorney Mitchell, I have a few more lines of questions. I'm wondering whether we can take a brief break and come back. I see that the time is now approximately 1:15.
All right, any objections to that, Attorney Monahan?
No, no objection if a short break is necessary.
All right, how much time do you want? Attorney McKinnon?
Probably 30 minutes.
Do you guys want to take like, kind of like, you know, an extended break, since we're probably going to be back on, you know, well after four?
Yes, if the intervenor is agreeable.
And this is not an objection at this moment, but Attorney Mitchell, if I just may ask, because of schedule, and there were five witnesses that, you know, I yet to have an opportunity, I'm just curious if a half-hour extended break is appropriate as opposed to a 15-minute break or 20-minute break? Not to shortchange anybody, but just if we are really looking at a schedule of finishing this this afternoon?
Attorney Mitchell, we can do 15 minutes. That's fine.
All right, so we'll, we'll take a 15-minute break and we'll come back at 1:30. All right, I'll be right back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just make sure to mute yourself. Thanks. I just want to check in, is everyone ready to go back on the record?
We're being at?
At, you're unmuted. Is everybody ready to go back on the record?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. I'm going to give the floor to you, then Attorney McKinnon, to continue your question.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mitchell. Dr. Martin, just a few more questions. Is Stanford affiliated with an academic institution?
So we have agreements with some academic institutions. We're one of the teaching facilities for Columbia University Medical School. And we have a partnership also with the hospital for special surgery.
With respect to the cardiac program, does Columbia provide support and oversight to the cardiology program?
To a limited extent, yes, Columbia does provide oversight to the cardiac surgery program and to some extent to the cardiology program.
And is there an integrated staff between the facilities? Meaning do staff and physicians go back and forth between the facilities?
By and large, no, there are, there is a heart failure specialist, Eddie Lynn, from Columbia, who works jointly between the two programs. He's not an interventional cardiologist. There's a, we, there are a couple of other physicians from Columbia who have privileges at our hospital, but do not routinely perform procedures here.
And is it correct that you don't routinely perform procedures at Columbia?
No, not at all. I don't have privileges there for to work at their hospital.
And the support that you receive from Columbia is an overall benefit to your program? Is that correct?
Yes.
And the integration between Columbia and Stanford is overall contributing to improvement of quality outcomes at the facility, is that right?
Yes, that's why we participate in it, to get the benefit of their physicians.
And do you share the same medical record as Columbia?
No.
Would you agree that the closer you are integrated with Columbia in the academic facility, the better your outcomes and quality, maybe?
Get to the form of the question.
I'll withdraw, Attorney Mitchell.
Okay.
Are you aware that Yale New Haven Health System has a fully-integrated cardiac program across all hospitals in the health system?
I'm not sure what you mean by that, but...
So I'll just, I'll take that as you're not aware of that. And are you aware that the physicians that perform PCI here at Greenwich Hospital also perform PCI at other health system hospitals in our Yale New Haven Health System?
Yes.
And would you agree that Yale New Haven Health System's relationship with its affiliated hospitals is more integrated than Stanford's relationship with Columbia?
An objection to the form of the question.
Attorney McKinnon, do you have any response to the question?
I can withdraw. Are you aware that all Yale New Haven Health System facilities are on the same epic medical record?
I was not aware, but I have no reason to doubt you.
And is it a benefit to patients choosing to receive care at a Yale New Haven Health System facility, that no matter what facility they ultimately receive care from, those patient records are on the same medical record?
Objection, Attorney Mitchell. It seems to me that we're straddling now into the benefits of a system or the benefits or pros and cons of being in a system that have nothing right now to do with PCI elective program application before us.
Florence, Attorney McKinnon?
Yale New Haven is also an applicant on the application, and I believe that the intervenor made statements about the growth of health systems within the intervenor's prefiled testimony. And the point of this questioning is to assess the benefits of health systems with respect to quality improvement at the facilities in our state.
I'm going to sustain that objection.
A few more questions. Your testimony seems to suggest that White Plains Hospital and New York Presbyterian Lawrence Hospital offer full cardiac programs with onsite backup. You recognize that the... You recognize that you do not have onsite backup at those facilities, is that correct?
Yeah, in my testimonies, page four, it says for full-service PCI programs. They do provide full-service PCI, but I recognize that two of them don't, don't have cardiac surgery backup.
Okay, and would it be accurate, or do you have any reason to dispute that White Plains opened its program in 2010 and Lawrence opened its program in 2015?
I have no reason to dispute that.
And there's nothing in your testimony that describes when these programs opened, offering elective PCI without onsite backup, that there was any impact on Stanford Hospital, correct?
I didn't understand that. Literally, I didn't understand the words. I apologize, Matthew. I just didn't.
I can restate the question. Does your testimony, does your testimony identify any impact to Stanford Hospital as a result of the opening of White Plains and Lawrence Hospitals program to offer elective PCI?
I think any business type questions, I would defer to Jonathan on my end. I, you know, for what I do day to day, you know, it has no impact.
Just to be clear though, your testimony doesn't cite any statistics that show any impact when White Plains or Lawrence opened their programs, correct?
Other than mentioning that they are local facilities, I don't think my testimony says anything about them.
Okay, thank you. And how far would you say White Plains is from Stanford Hospital?
That I don't know.
Does about 15 miles sound correct? Can we stipulate the 15 miles?
I'm gonna, Jack, I think there was testimony in the.
Are you willing to, I just turn it over to you Attorney Monahan, are you willing to stipulate the 10 mile? I'm sorry, 15 miles or?
If we're talking about the 15 miles between where to where, I'm sorry.
Between White Plains Hospital and Stanford Hospital?
I don't, I have no basis candidly for stipulating whether it's 15 or 14 or 13 or 17. I apologize. I have no objection to any type of lead file that has a an appropriately based mileage that we can, can agree on that, that comes off of the.
Attorney Mitchell, I can move on, sorry.
Okay.
The question is, are you aware of any impact to Stanford Hospital when White Plains Hospital opened its elective PCI program without cardiac backup in 2010?
I'm not aware of any such.
And are, is it accurate to say you're also not aware of any impact to Stanford Hospital as a result of Lawrence Hospital opening its program in 2015?
Objection. What kind of impact, are you talking about impact on hospital finances? Impact on quality of care, impact on? I, I'm not sure I understand the question.
I can restate, are you aware of any impacts in terms of lost volume to Stanford Hospital as a result of Lawrence Hospital opening its facility in 2015 to perform elective PCI without cardiac backup?
I don't know the answer to that.
And are you aware of any financial impacts?
I don't feel able to answer that one.
Okay. And I believe your testimony states that the only way for Greenwich Hospital to achieve its volume projections is to redirect patient volume from Stanford Hospital, and there would be no public benefit. Is that your testimony?
I believe that was in Jonathan's testimony, but can you point, find out where, what we're referring to?
I can withdraw the question and move on. Are you aware that the CON application does not project any shift in volume from Stanford Hospital to Greenwich Hospital?
I believe that's in the application, yes.
And I believe I asked this question to Mr. Bailey, but to confirm with Dr. Martin, is it accurate that your testimony does not identify the number of patients that may be impacted and shift from Stanford to Greenwich as a result of this proposal?
Correct.
And your testimony also doesn't identify a financial impact either, correct?
Right.
And would you agree that there's a certain number of patients in our local geography that choose Greenwich Hospital and Yale for cardiovascular care?
I think clearly there are patients who choose to see multiple different doctors, including Greenwich Hospital and Yale Cardiac Care.
And the only way for those patients to receive elective PCI from their chosen provider on the same medical record is to travel to Bridgeport or Yale New Haven, is that correct?
I don't think patients really care about their medical record, but, but in the current environment, their, their doctors don't have privileges here because they haven't asked for them. And yes, they stay on the same medical record if that's important to the patient, they would have to go to Bridgeport or Yale.
And there's a benefit to academic affiliations, correct?
An objection is vague benefit.
Believe earlier, Dr. Martin stated that the affiliation with Columbia was intended to improve quality. You would agree that academic affiliations generally would improve quality of care?
I, you know, as I've mentioned multiple times, quality for what I do is a difficult thing to measure because bad outcomes are rare, but, but yeah, the, the point of being affiliated with the tertiary center and academic medical centers to try to improve quality.
And is it accurate to say that patients would benefit from being able to receive elective PCI from their physician of choice at their facility of choice?
I think that's speculative.
I'm just gonna, at this point, I'm just gonna interject now. And the reason why I'm doing this is kind of in the interest of, of time, but when I'm listening to the line of questioning, it sounds like you're gonna, you're trying to get the intervenor to say some of the things that you've said about quality and access and everything in, in your own application. And I have heard the testimony from your witnesses, I've read the testimony. You're probably not going to get them to admit that if they're on the same medical record, it's beneficial. You know, I, I just, you know, if there's anything else new or different that maybe you have in terms of questions that might elicit new information, that would be helpful. But it just kind of seems like at this point, I don't, I don't know if the, the questions that are being asked are that productive in terms of helping us make a decision.
Attorney Mitchell, just a few more questions. And I can close, I have no issue doing that. Dr. Martin, would you agree that it's a benefit to patients not to incur transfer cost as a result of receiving care locally?
Sure, I would, I would say that any, avoiding any cost is a good thing for patients.
Cut. And you would also agree that patient choice is an important consideration as to where they, patients receive healthcare services?
I'm gonna, Jack, we, we did go over this ground before the break.
Attorney Monahan, I think it's in the record, we could, we could move on. I agree.
Thank you both.
Attorney Mitchell, I believe that closes our cross-examination of the intervenor.
Okay. So I do, I do thank you for your questions, I think, both of the intervenor's witnesses. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you Attorney Monahan for questions for the applicant's witnesses.
Thank you. I would like to ask questions of Ms. Diane Kelly, who was the, I believe, the first witness.
I'm also Diane Kelly.
Hello, Ms. Kelly, how are you? I'm Pat Monahan, as you know, and I represent Stanford Health. And I'm going to ask you a few questions about your testimony and then above the remarks and the remarks you made here today. In your, well, first of all, I, I appreciated your comment in your opening. And if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, you stated that you enjoy a good collaboration with Stanford Health, especially during the COVID-19 period that we've all unfortunately been going through, correct?
Yes, I did. I was able to establish a very good working collaborative relationship with Jonathan. It was our first time that we were able to work together, so we have a very, as we all do in healthcare, we have very much a very common purpose, so.
Well, and I, I appreciate that, and you've taken the next question out of my mouth. I mean, hospitals in general try to work together for the benefit of patient good, correct?
Correct.
Now, in your testimony, you have stated that your two primary areas are Fairfield County in Connecticut and Westchester County in New York, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And in both of those locations, there already exists elective PCI programs with surgical backup, correct? One at Stanford Hospital and one at Westchester Medical Center, correct?
Yes.
And you are aware of one of the critical elements of the office of, that the legislature has implemented in our CON statute of there being a clear public need before a new medical service would simply be placed in an area if there is no void to fill, correct?
I have read that.
Okay, so right now, you do acknowledge that in your locale you have two elective PCI programs that do perform more than 200 PCI cases at their facilities in your service area, correct?
Correct.
In your written testimony, you also highlight Greenwich Hospital's commitment to service excellence, correct?
Correct.
As president of Greenwich Hospital, do you recognize and encourage that that commitment to service excellence involves continuing study and understanding of recommended best practices from authoritative sources in clinical areas such as the American Heart Association, Society for Cardiovascular Angiography and Interventionalists, and the American College of Cardiology Foundation?
I do, especially with the emphasis on continuing. We, we, every year we learn more and we have additional updates. So that is the hallmark of what we do, is continuously looking at the best practices, because they're not always the same from one year to the next. We evolve fortunately as healthcare.
Right, but I think I, 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 picking up on the key word that you said there about best practices, because especially in the area of cardiac care, as we heard from, or at least as I heard in testimony, cardiac care, if you're heading toward a better outcome, you're heading toward a, a better patient outcome for the patient. If you're heading toward a worse outcome, that in many cases, that worse outcome can mean death, correct?
Can you, I'm not sure what the question was.
Objected to the form of the question, I don't know what the.
I don't even know what that was.
All right, I'm gonna ask, do you have any response to the objection on the form of the question, Attorney Monahan?
No, I, I, I'm just asking if the president of Greenwich Hospital recognizes that a worse outcome for a cardiac patient can lead to death?
She's not, she's not a religion.
I, I'm not going to answer that, the way it's stated.
All right.
Personal feelings, there can be worse than death.
If you can't answer the question, I'll, I'll move on.
Okay. Just, just for future consideration, if there's anything that you don't know or you feel like you don't have the expertise about, it's okay to say that.
Thank you.
Now, also in your written testimony, you, you do refer to the program at Lawrence and Memorial Hospital, correct?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
And, and of course Lawrence and Memorial Hospital is within the Yale New Haven Health System?
Correct.
And you recognize, don't you, that the decision to permit Lawrence and Memorial Hospital was granted to allow them to do their elective PCI without surgical backup because of their geographic isolation from the closest hospital which would be over 40 miles away with surgical backup, correct?
Attorney Mitchell, I'm going to object, there are a variety of reasons.
Yeah, because it wasn't.
And the form of the question identifies one reason. And I think the record speaks for itself.
All right, Attorney Monahan, any response to the objection?
Yeah, well, if, if I may, this is, I, I'd like to read the exact reasoning in the discussion for the granting, if I may, to see if that helps the witness understand or refute my question.
All right, I'll allow it. Hopefully it's not over a page.
No, it isn't. It's only a couple of sentences.
Okay.
Well, it's one paragraph of three sentences, to be exact. I am reading from the discussion in the final decision of the Lawrence and Memorial Decision, topic number 1231768, CON.
Attorney Mitchell, I'm going to object. Can you identify the page of the decision?
Page 12 of 16.
It is that within the prefiled testimony of Ms. Kelly?
Yes. Well, it is, Ms. Kelly is referring to the Lawrence and Memorial Program. And I am referring to the Lawrence and Memorial Program, which has been asserted throughout your application. And if, given what Attorney Mitchell has just said, I may do, I'd like to proceed to read the three sentences.
All right. Can I ask a clarifying question, please?
Hold on one moment. Let me just, let's just back up. So with regard to the objection, let me just ask, the purpose of the question, Attorney Monahan, is, is what?
The purpose of the question is to show that the Lawrence and Memorial situation is very different from the Greenwich PCI application that they keep referring to as a comparable situation. The purpose is to show that the decision in the Lawrence and Memorial Decision was abiding by the guidelines where there was an isolated geographic area. And it is spelled out crystal clearly in the discussion of the LNM decision. So for the applicants to throw LNM in almost all of the prefiled testimony throughout their application and yet object to my reciting a premise or a key premise of that decision, to me, makes no sense.
Let me just ask Attorney McKinnon and Attorney Ashneed, is Ms. Kelly, is she the best person to respond to any questions specific to the LNM decision?
I don't think she is. And, and the fact is that you've taken administrative notice of the decision. So I don't know why he needs to read that decision to this witness.
All right. So let me just ask, is there anybody that you have that's a witness that might be able to answer the question about the rationale for the decision and the distinction between that decision and the application that's before OHS?
Attorney Mitchell, I believe that would be a legal interpretation and not a clinical or operational interpretation, and that should best be left to the agency.
All right. Let me just ask throughout the, you know, because I did note it as well. So throughout the, the prefiled testimony, there are references to LNM and to their program. And to what extent is, are those references comparable to the facts in the application with regard to Greenwich? I'm asking actually counsel that question.
Well, if you're asking.
Not you, Attorney Monahan. I'm sorry.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I thought you were, with your face on the screen, looking at me. I thought you were asking me. I'm sorry.
I think the point being, if there are questions about the particular program and its relationship to Yale New Haven, those are appropriate and we are prepared to answer. But if it's a question as to the legal decision-making of the agency, those are outside the scope of the clinicians and operators here. Those are the agency's determination.
So here, here's the question that I have again for counsel. I just want to make sure that I understand. And I just want to make sure that the record's complete. There are a number of instances where, you know, there is some discussion about LNM's program and how well they've done since the inception of that program. And I think that what I'm hearing from Attorney Monahan is he is basically saying that the reason why that program was granted to LNM is, is a little bit different than, you know, what's before us today. And I am asking counsel, you know, to what extent is there any agreement about that so that we can proceed with the questioning on it?
I think the record speaks for itself.
Well, I'm sorry. I don't want to speak out of turn.
I'm actually going to allow it. Attorney Monahan, did you have a response to that?
I do. It, it is a clinical question. And wait, I can, if Ms., if Ms. Kelly truly cannot answer that question, then as president of Greenwich Hospital, I will ask the clinicians because that guideline is in every single guideline about the geographic isolation exception that applies to LNM. So to say that it is a legal conclusion when it is embodied in the very clinical guideline cited by applicants, I believe is incorrect. And I can address it with the clinicians.
Let me just ask one other question, just for the sake of just making sure that we keep the, you know, that we, we don't, you know, muddy the water, so to say.
Certainly.
Attorneys McKinnon and Attorney Ashneed, are you asserting in any way that, that this specific application relates to the argument that Greenwich is geographically isolated?
We, we have not made that argument. I think we have focused on LNM's experience to demonstrate low-volume institutions can maintain their quality over a period of time. And that's been the reference and not to the geographic isolation.
Okay. Let me just ask Attorney Monahan, does that assist in any way in terms of the questions that you were asking with regard to the comparison of the facts of that case and the outcome in that case and the facts of this case?
Yes, I view that as a, as a, an admission that they, the, that there is not a comparison to me, me between LNM and this Greenwich application because the, the granting, the, the, the premise of the LNM was the satisfying of the condition of isolation, geographic isolation, which by the admission of the applicants here, does not apply to Greenwich. So with that stipulation, I'm prepared to move to the next question.
All right. I just want to make sure that we have a very clear attorneys for the applicants. You're just, I just, what I asked was specifically, are you asserting that there is geographic isolation in this specific application? That was the only thing. I wasn't talking about any of the other quality metrics. Is that what you're saying? Because I don't want to put words in your mouth that aren't in the application. So I just want to make sure that that's crystal clear.
We are not asserting geographic isolation yet using Lawrence and Memorial Hospital as a primary example of a program that has great quality outcomes over many years without onsite backup, proving changes and evolve it in the evolution of the practice over time within the health system.
All right. And Attorney Monahan, any response to that?
I'm prepared to move on to my next question.
Sounds, sounds good. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Kelly, in your written testimony, beginning at the bottom of page three and moving over to page four, there is discussion of the track record of success offering elective PCI without onsite cardiac surgery. At, at least what you're proffering as at LNM, Greenwich Hospital, the Heart and Vascular Center, if I'm using that acronym correctly, through the leadership, developed through a careful analysis and a clinical growth plan. Am I correct in referring you to your, your reference to clinical, clinical growth plan that encompasses this desire to get Greenwich Hospital to have an elective PCI without surgical backup?
I'm just looking, if you give me one moment, please.
I think you're confused about the, where that's located.
It's at the top of page four, the second line.
Thank you.
I know. I want to make sure it's my testimony. I'm just looking to make sure because I have what I prepared for you in writing today and what was submitted to you. I don't see my reference for clinical growth plan.
I'm looking at what you prefiled.
Yes, that's what I'm looking at. Do you have that, John? I can certainly speak to the clinical. Yeah, my testimony. I don't see what he's talking about. I'm sorry. I want to make sure I'm answering to the right document.
That's okay.
And I'm pretty precise in remembering what I said, and I, that's not in.
Fourth bullet under proposal. It says clinical growth plan.
On page three, on page four? I don't have.
Page two, on page two.
Are you looking at yours or mine? A adjusted.
Sorry, if it helps you, I can, I can, it's, it's dated September 30th. It's your prefiled testimony. It, there's a sentence that begins on the bottom of page three that says, "With this strong infrastructure in place," and then it carries over to some more words that include the clinical growth plan that I referred to.
Do you guys want me to entertain the question or verify they're looking at the right person's testimony? So I don't have it in front of me, but why don't you ask me the question again and I'll use my, use my memory.
Okay, I should have thought of that myself. Okay. In your testimony, you do speak about the, the excellence and the significance of the Yale New Haven Heart and Vascular Center, HVC. And you, you go on, as I read this, to interpret it as part of a strong infrastructure. And after careful analysis, coming up with a clinical growth plan that now involves including elective PCI at Greenwich Hospital without surgical backup. Am I correct that that is what you are imparting to the Office of Healthcare Strategy? As part of the clinical growth plan of HVC?
That's correct.
Now, being aware that we are in Connecticut, which is a CON state, you recognize, don't you, or, or tell me if you disagree, that the fact that a successful system like Yale New Haven Health System and its growth plans throughout the state in whatever direction in the state is not in any way to compromise the statutory factor requirement of clear public need, correct?
I mean, I think the use of the word clinic growth plan is implied, it may be different from financial, you know.
I'll, I'll repeat the, I'll, I'll repeat the question to make it simple. Clear public need, one of the primary requirements in our CON statute. It applies to Greenwich Hospital and it applies to Yale New Haven Health System, no matter how expansive or excellent your growth plans may be, correct?
Again, I don't know what he means by growth plans. Is this clinical growth or?
These are your words in your testimony.
So may I give you an interpretation of clinical growth plan from my, from how we look at it?
If you can't answer the question I asked, you can certainly, then go ahead. And I'm willing to entertain what you have to say.
Thank you. So the clinical growth plan is built on expanding high-quality care to those that we are committed to. And in this particular plan, what we are doing is trying to bring excellent providers to the community and being part of a comprehensive system where we have a shared medical record, physicians of high quality, and manage through a continuum of care. So it is not isolated to heart and vascular care. It is, it's a continuum of care provided to our patients.
Oh, thank you.
Growth and enhancing our services, not so much growing in the, in the idea of volume, if you will.
Okay. But, and, and with that plan in mind, you, Yale and Haven Health System and your Heart and Vascular Center, you all still are subject to the clear public need requirement of the Connecticut statutes. You recognize that, don't you?
Why, yes, I do.
Okay. You also recognize that you are subject to the Connecticut statewide healthcare plan, Facilities and Services Plan, correct?
Correct.
And have you read that document as it pertains to cardiac conditions in preparation for this hearing?
No, I have not personally read that document.
In your testimony, excuse me, in your testimony, and if you end up getting your testimony, you can let me know that because otherwise I'll try to get you to.
Yeah, definitely. Good. Just because I'm not sure which we're referring to. Thank you.
Okay. I'm looking in your written testimony, near the end of your testimony, where, where you, you state that, and I'll read the sentence for you. Says, "About this service addition." And the service addition you're talking about is the elective PCI program at issue here would benefit all Greenwich Hospital patients, patients of the relatively new Putnam facility mentioned previously, receiving treatment for advanced cardiac conditions that routinely require access to elective PCI, could take comfort knowing that the care needed could be pursued locally with the same physician in the same coordinated health system. Do you recognize that statement as yours?
Well, I don't have it on what I submitted, but I certainly agree. And I recognize that statement of something that I would say.
Okay.
I think that's fair.
As you established at the very beginning of this, the, the, if a physician were to choose to apply for medical staff privileges at Stanford Hospital, I'm, I see you shaking your head, but I didn't finish the question.
I'm trying to listen.
Okay. If, if a physician, one of your successful and excellent operators were to apply for privileges at Stanford Hospital, that elective PCI with surgical backup. that elective PCI with surgical backup could be pursued locally by patients who wanted to choose that particular cardiac physician, isn't that correct?
Can you, can you say it one more time, I'm sorry?
Sure.
I apologize.
A patient will often go to their cardiologist and say, "Doctor, I want you to take care of me." A cardiologist applies for privileges at Stanford Hospital right now, which is seven miles away from you, to do an elective PCI with surgical backup. Isn't it so, and is granted privileges, and isn't it so that that cardiologist could say to that patient, "Yes, we can do that locally, right here in Stanford, seven miles away from Greenwich Hospital"? Isn't that the case?
It is the case, but they would not have the benefit of having all of their information in one electronic medical record, and I know somebody stated that's not important, but it is important for healthcare professionals, and actually, our government has stated that it's a priority, so I can't answer without adding that.
Okay, assuming we were to, that the hospitals, as you say, so collaborated so well in connection with COVID, could collaborate as well in communicating appropriate medical records with each other for the best interest of a patient, assuming that you are capable of doing that with Stanford Hospital, isn't it the case that you can still provide a patient local service with a PCI elective program with surgical backup at Stanford Hospital?
It's correct, but it's a big assumption, and at the end of the day, I do believe patients have choice, and I think that matters. So if the patient said, "No, doctor, I want to go to Stanford, not Greenwich," we would not object to that. But I do believe in choice, and we do have patients that say, "I prefer to stay here at Greenwich." It does matter, and I think it matters clinically, patients, how they're perceiving and receiving their care is very important, and we should not minimize it.
And, you know, and believe me, I'm not a doctor, and I'm not diminishing patient choice, and I heard Dr. Martin talk about how patient choice is certainly an important factor. But in the interest of the clinical guidelines that have been quoted over and over, which I'm not going to repeat, and, and the benefit of having surgical backup, even in that very rare instance where it can mean the difference between life and death, I believe that my question is, would a patient normally who entrusts this serious condition in the cardiac position of their choice typically follow the recommendation of that cardiologist?
Objection, I mean.
I, I can't really answer that.
Hold on one moment, Ms. Kelly, what's the objection, Attorney Ashmead?
He is, he is asking a clinical question to a non-clinician. How would she know what a patient would normally do?
All right, so it may be best for you to ask that to another witness, Attorney Monahan.
Certainly, I'll move on, yes. Well, we know based on your application, Ms. Kelly, that you don't send patients to Stanford Hospital, that you, patients who are in need of an elective PCI, you transport them very often to Yale New Haven Health in New Haven, which is, you know, sometimes depending on traffic, 60 minutes away, correct?
Objection, there's no factual predicate for the assumptions in the question, that 60 minutes away, you know, he's not laid, he's not established how we transport patients.
I'm going to sustain that, Attorney Monahan.
Okay, I'll just, without getting into the minutes and everything, but it's clear that you've made it clear in your application that the patients are transferred within the Yale New Haven system to either Bridgeport Hospital or to Yale New Haven Hospital, correct?
Correct.
All right, I have no other questions of Ms. Kelly.
Thanks, Ms. Kelly.
May I question Dr. House?
Yes, I'm available.
Hello, Dr. House, my name is Pat Monahan, as you know, and I'm also going to ask you some questions about your testimony.
Just before you proceed, it seems like here Ms. Mitchell's Zoom picture has gone off, is she still present or?
No, I'm still here, I just had to stand up for a second.
Fine, I didn't want to have to go through it twice.
No, thank you. Here I am.
Okay, all right. One of the points made in your testimony, doctor, is the, and I'm looking at the page seven of your testimony, your prefiled testimony, that the lack of elective angioplasty.
Maybe your printer and our printer is different, I only have five pages in my prefiled.
Okay, fair enough, that does happen. I am looking at the, you have bullet points of group one, two, and three?
Yes.
Okay, and then after that, you, you have a paragraph, and this next paragraph that starts with the lack of elective angioplasty at Greenwich Hospital results in disruption of care for patients, do you see that paragraph?
Yep.
Okay. You say that currently Greenwich Hospital patients must be transferred or referred to other hospitals for elective angioplasty procedures, even though there are, and I'm paraphrasing, the cardiologists and catheterization labs staff support onsite at Greenwich Hospital available 24 hours a day to provide the needed care. As I mentioned before in Ms. Kelly's testimony, through one of my questions, you say many of those patients are transported to Yale New Haven Hospital or Bridgeport Hospital where they are treated by the same Yale School of Medicine's physicians from whom they would have received at Greenwich Hospital, correct? You see that?
Yeah, I see it.
Okay. Is there anything preventing those physicians who are performing those procedures at Yale New Haven Hospital or Bridgeport Hospital from applying for privileges at Stanford Hospital where there is seven minutes, excuse me, seven miles away from Stanford, the, the emergency backup?
Yes, I feel very strongly that there is, and that's the quality of care of a HVC system. We are a fully integrated health system. Dr. Velazquez, the chief of Yale School of Medicine, is at Yale overseeing 100 physicians. I speak with him on a daily basis. We communicate every week as the chief of the satellite hospital and his program. The staff at the Yale Care Plan works under the exact same protocols that they work at L&amp;M, St. Rayfield's, which we haven't discussed, and Greenwich. It's a fully integrated system. To ask me or one of my colleagues to go do a procedure at Stanford Hospital is, you know, asking someone to drive someone else's car. You know how to drive, but you never drive it as well as you drive the things that you're familiar with. And I think to think that we just jump to another hospital and another system and be able to do the same care is fundamentally flawed. And this gets to your point about the guidelines, talking about institutional volume and operator volume. And there is nuance between those two things, but our institutional volume is maintained by these connections. Our nursing staff in Greenwich Hospital are Yale-New Haven heart and vascular nurses. They go to Yale-New Haven for routine proficiencies and upgrades on training. It's a very, very different system than having a loose affiliation with Columbia. It's a completely different program.
So is it your position that you will refuse to allow your physicians to apply for privileges at Stanford Hospital?
Objection.
I'm asked, that's a fair question based on that answer.
That was not his testimony.
But, but it's a question. In your position, are you saying?
Yeah, I'm going to let him answer.
Please restate the question.
Are you stating on the record that you refuse to permit Yale-New Haven Health System cardiologists, physicians, apply for privileges at Stanford Hospital to perform PSI, elective PCI, PSI with surgical backup when they may believe they have the best interest of their local patient involved?
Well, number one, I don't employ any cardiologists, and I have no control over who works where or who applies where, and I certainly would not restrict anybody, any physician, to choose where they want to work or practice.
Well, in your testimony, you state that no impact is expected on existing provider volumes at other Connecticut hospitals in the Greenwich Hospital service area due to the established referral patterns for those patients. You see that sentence?
Point it out to me again, which paragraph?
It's in the same paragraph we were reading.
Please restate the question.
I'm asking you if you see the sentence that says, "No impact is expected on existing provider volumes at other Connecticut hospitals in the Greenwich Hospital service area due to the established referral patterns for these patients." You see that sentence?
I do.
Okay, in the Greenwich Hospital service area, doctor, seven miles away, Stanford Hospital is in your service area, correct?
Yes.
And a referral pattern is not set in stone, is it? Referral patterns can change, can't they?
They can.
Unless they are restricted or mandated that they can't change. And am I, am I understanding from you that there is no mandate in the Yale-New Haven Health System or the Greenwich Hospital system that prohibits a cardiologist from applying for staff privileges at Stanford Hospital if that physician decides that it is in the best interest of their patients to stay locally?
I can't speak to other people. I've been working through the Yale system for 23 years, I believe, and no one has told me that I cannot apply to another program, and I have had no interest in applying to another program.
Okay. So it's a physician by physician choice, is what you're telling me?
I'm acknowledging I don't know, I don't know everybody's work agreement, I don't, I'm not involved on that level.
Now, later in your testimony, you talked about, you selected a quote from the 2012 ACCF-SCAI expert consensus document. And the quote that you inserted was, "When, without onsite cardiovascular surgical backup," excuse me, I skipped a sentence, "when patients are appropriately selected, most published studies regarding the risk of elective PCI at facilities without onsite cardiovascular surgical backup have shown the procedure to be relatively safe," close quote. Am I correct about that?
See that, yes.
That's only one quote in the whole document, correct?
Yes, of course.
And in fact, quotes that you did not include in your testimony on page eight stamped 450 in your own application that are not, as I said, not in the testimony, refer to the statement, "It is generally believed that elective and primary PCI are permissible in sites without cardiovascular surgery if there is strict adherence to national guidelines." And then in the same paragraph, it says, "Any national volume guidelines must be strictly followed." And have I correctly read those sentences?
I don't know, I don't have that page right in front of me.
Well, if you, if you don't, I can represent to you that I did, but if you would like me to point you to so you can confirm that I am reading them correctly, I'll read them again.
Attorney Monahan, what page of the CON application?
Or actually, in the document, which section is it, they're like 22, 23, 24?
It's on, to answer, first of all, your attorney's question, it's on 000450 is the base stamp. And the section that is in is in the executive summary under the heading, cardiac catheterization at a facility without cardiovascular surgery. My point is, you selected one statement in your testimony, but you didn't include it all, right?
Okay, to respond to that, obviously I didn't quote the entire document, which is very wrong.
I'm moving on to the next question.
I would like to add that this is an expert consensus document given as a guideline. It is not a mandatory statement, there is no required protocol mandated from this. This is a guideline, guideline means to give advice. And to think that any of these documents is the holy word is to overstate the power of these documents. In fact, in this document's preamble, it says, "This document, best attempt of the ACC and document cosponsors to inform and guide clinical practice in areas where vigorous evidence may not yet be available or evidence to date is not widely applied to clinical practice." My interpretation is that, is they acknowledge it's a living document, and it changes by the time they publish it.
The doctor, it was authoritative for you to quote it, wasn't it?
It's quoted throughout all of this CON application by both sides.
But my point is.
We use these guidelines, but my personal perspective is that they never dictate the care that we provide. They help to guide us.
As I, as I understand it, fine institutions like Yale-New Haven Health System, Greenwich Hospital, and Stanford Hospital all consider peer-reviewed guidelines to try to reach best practices, to put all the best thinking together to come up with the best outcomes for their patients, correct?
To try to come up with the best practices, absolutely.
All right, so you're not dismissing this as a, as a sort of a, an article that appears in some less than authoritative body, are you?
No, quite the contrary, I think it's a very useful and important document, but it is a guideline. It gives advice, it doesn't mandate.
Okay, well, would it be helpful to you to? Okay, well, would it be helpful to you to recognize, or do you recognize that the state of Connecticut specifically has demonstrated in its statewide health plan that it follows or encourages following these guidelines? Are you aware of that?
Do you guys want to answer that legal question?
Oh, do you know the answer? I'm asking the witness.
I was gonna
I do know that.
Hold on, hold on one moment. Hold on one moment. It's okay for him to ask his attorney for assistance, but I was gonna say in addition to that, if you don't, if you're unaware of it, it's okay to say, you know, that you haven't read it or you're unaware, and you would have to defer to counsel. It's okay. Do you know the answer to it? If you don't know it, just stay.
I'm aware of it, and I don't agree with it.
Okay. So so that this, just so I'm clear, the statewide healthcare facilities and service plan, which is an integral part of the CON factors to be considered in the expansion of CON services you are vying for here, is, is certainly a critical part of the consideration. And in the cardiac section of the statewide health plan, which you said you are aware of, you disagree with what the authors and the stakeholders put together to form that section of the document. Is that my understanding of your testimony?
I know nothing about the process of how that document and those conclusions are come to. I don't agree that the guidelines should be viewed as mandatory or as the absolute word. They're to give
That's not my question. I understand you don't deem them as mandatory. My question is, you stated to me, unless you misspoke, you disagree with the statewide health plan. Is that your testimony, or are you saying that it should not be mandated?
Before you answer, Attorney Mitchell, I've let this go two or three times, but Attorney Monahan continues to interrupt the witness before he finishes his answer. So I just asked that he allow the witness to respond before he interjects.
Okay, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna agree. And then in addition to that, do you, do you under, not understand it, because I don't want you to feel like I think that you don't understand, but I just want to make sure, do you, do you understand the distinction that he's making with the, in terms of the question?
I don't think I do.
Okay, so Attorney Monahan, can you just specifically state, when he says you're asking him what he disagrees with, and I just want to make sure that he understands specifically what you're asking in terms of what he disagrees about?
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Did you, I understand you disagree, if I understood you correctly, doctor, that you disagree with the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan as it pertains to PCI? Can you explain to me what you disagree with?
No, your original question said something else about the way they incorporate and interpret the guidelines.
I want you to just stick with the question that he asked, though. In terms of what you disagree with, help us understand what that is.
I think he's just, I think he's just explained it. He, he has explained that he disagrees with how OHS has incorporated the guidelines. He has testified that the guidelines are, they give some guidance, but we shouldn't rigidly follow them.
Is that what you're saying, doctor? I just want to make sure that those are your words.
That is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Your guidelines.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions of Dr. House.
All right, thanks, Dr. House.
Just one moment, Attorney Mitchell.
Yes.
My table to just go over to consult with one of my colleagues for a moment.
Sure.
Thank you. Attorney Mitchell.
You're welcome.
I would like to call Dr. Velazquez or ask questions of Dr. Velazquez.
Sure, Attorney Monahan, I'm here.
I'm sorry. Hello, doctor. Doctor, I know there's been a lot of talk, and needless to say, I'm not a doctor, but there's been a lot of talk about the clinical guidelines and the various guidelines that have come into play in this proceeding and, and how they have evolved over time, and in fact, that's how guidelines do evolve. They evolve over time, correct?
That is correct.
And as, as was, you know, brought out by your attorneys, the intervenors have referenced guidelines from 2012 and 2014 and, and in both rebuttal testimony and in additional exhibits. In fact, there are additional guidelines from these, one or more of these same organizations in 2016 and 2020, correct?
I can't speak to the dates of the updates, but they are updated on a regular schedule by the societies that you've referenced, the American College of Cardiology, the American Heart Association, and the Society of Cardiomy angiography interventionists always have an update schedule that they, that they adhere to to review the status of the evidence as it evolves.
Okay, so if, if we, you know, we had talked, there had been talk about the 2014 consensus statement. And, and I can represent to you that I am now looking at a SCAI expert consensus statement, 2016 best practices in the cardiac catheterization catheterization laboratory. And it was published in 2016 by Wiley Periodicals. Is that something you're familiar with?
I am familiar with it. I do not have it in front of me.
I'm sorry. Did I understand that you have that or don't have that?
I just, I had said that I am familiar with it, but I did not have it in front of me, but I do have a document that was published in Catheterization and Cardiovascular Interventions in 2016, which represents an endorsement by several cardiac societies, including India, Latino-American, Canadian with Sky. Important to highlight that the American Heart Association and the American College of Cardiology did not obviously agree to put their names on this because they did not endorse these guidelines, to our understanding. And, and to be, to be frank, if this is the reference, this is identified as a teaching document, part of the core curriculum series that this, this, this group puts out, and so it's meant as an educational document for people in training and/or who want to update training. So I'm ready to answer any questions I have in front of me if you want to speak to a specific component of it.
Okay, let me understand, the SCAI expert consensus, the SCAI organization is an organization that you, in the course of your career, have viewed as authoritative, have you?
I am not an interventional cardiologist, so the answer is it is one of multiple societies that, that are considered components of, of, you know, a way for, for clinicians to gather. And I tend to, I'm not someone who longs to die personally, but I have no reason to suspect they would have any but the best intentions. They typically would write things that would be considered authoritative in collaboration with larger organizations like the American College of Cardiology and the American Heart Association. So again, that each, each society certainly has a right to put out information, which I think gives you a sense of, of the variability in opinion and in process that these societies utilize. So it's always stronger when they come together.
Okay, well, just with all of that explanation, if we just turn the page to, to the second page of the document, at least, again, moving through the time period from 2012 now to 2016, at least in this document with all the caveats you just gave, on the second column of the first full paragraph, it begins with the lead sentence, and I quote, "Clinical competence guidelines state that in order to maintain proficiency while keeping complications at a low level, a minimum volume of, volume of greater than 200 PCIs per year be achieved by all institutions." Did I read that correctly?
Correctly, yes, and it does
Thank you.
highlight an opportunity that I've been wanting to correct. As the Heart and Vascular Center is an integrated and coordinated system approach that provides, you know, one care signature across all of Yale, New Haven Health, it is misconstrued to think of Greenwich Hospital, which is part of the Heart and Vascular Center, as a single institution where in fact, it, it works in coordination as part of the same Heart and Vascular Center with Yale, New Haven Hospital, with LNM, and with Bridgeport. So our care signature, our staff, our faculty operators are part of that, that institution. And so that institution, as I've shared in my testimony, has volumes that are, you know, in, in far in excess of 200 per year. In fact, in the thousands of, of, per year. So I do want to add that to the, to the record because it is, I think, a miscon, it's misconstrued to think of the Greenwich Hospital cath lab as operating in isolation from the fully integrated Heart and Vascular Center, which it is part of.
Well, I appreciate that explanation.